The Fledge of Allegiance.
The next special meeting for our code enforcement workshop is scheduled for Friday, June 30th, at 9:00 a.m. at the Island View Restaurant, 35468 Teatime Circle. The next evening meeting for a public hearing on the 2017-2018 budget is scheduled for Thursday, July 13th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Community Center, 3500 Edgewater Drive. Next regular meeting is scheduled for Friday, July 21st, 2017, at 9:00 a.m. at the Island View Restaurant, 35468 Teatime Circle. Please silence or turn off your cellphones. And I have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion approved.
I'll second that.
Do you guys have any comment?
No.
Public comment on the consent agenda only.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. I'd like to have a motion to accept the action agenda.
Motion approved. I'll second that.
Okay, action agenda A, resolution number...
We have to take it up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes. Resolution number 2017-0623-36, a resolution of Sunna Lake of Sabring Improvement District to approve an agreement with the Board of County Commissioners, Highland County, Florida, for extending Cortez Boulevard to Schumacher Road and paving a portion of Schumacher Road. Can you...
We need a motion.
I need a motion.
Oh, I shall move. Sorry.
Supervisors, presented to you today is an interlocal agreement between the district and Highlands County. This agreement provides for a maximum of $50,000 in funding to the county to pave Schumacher Road, 3,300 feet from Ortega Street to Cortez Road. The county has estimated that the total cost of the paving will be $200,000. Additionally, Polston Engineering estimated that Cortez Road extension will cost $50,000, which the county will construct for the district during the time that they're mobilized paving Schumacher Road. The county will invoice the district at a later date, once the construction is complete. Just a few things I wanted to point out on the timelines of events to getting to where we are today. Various meetings have been with the property owners since 2014, or maybe even before. The county deeded six lots over to the district for drainage, and the address of those lots is 7001 Orduna Drive back in June of 2016. The district is in the process of finalizing the acquisition of 6521 Orduna Drive, and have acquired 80 feet of 5916 Schumacher Road for the Cortez extension. And the engineering impairment process for Cortez Road is almost complete. I've provided you numerous documentation from meetings in the past, petitions from homeowners in the district, and some other information about this project.
Any comment from the board?
I met last Monday with Ron, and I see Ron's in the audience here, Ron Hanley, with the county. My concern was the $50,000 that we were paying to do Schumacher. I tried my best to convince him not to charge us the $50,000, and it's not Ron. There's some commissioners in it that have basically laid down the line that without this $50,000 going against it, the project is not going to happen. We talked for quite a little while about it. One of the things that Tanya did mention to me is the county has always been a lot cheaper in doing it, fixing a road for us. Cortez Boulevard, if we went ahead and finished it out, say the county didn't finish it and finished it out to the gravel, an outside source on that would probably be $75,000 or $80,000 just to do that extension on Cortez. So you may want to ask Ron for a comment pretty soon after the board gets done. That's all I have on it. It convinced me that it's not going to happen unless we furnish the $50,000 to do Schumacher. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Sure. Nobody else wants to speak, I will. I have actually a few questions. Initially, when we purchased the property, and I see the timeline here, and the most recent one being, well, actually, I shouldn't say the most recent, but the acquisition of 62, 6521 Orduna Drive from Mr. Rogers. Initially, when that was happening, I tried to do my research, and shame on me, I guess I didn't do enough of it, I was told that Schumacher was going to be paved, okay, and that we were not going to be paying anything towards that. It was a done deal that was happening. To my chagrin, I find out that now we're facing a $50,000 additional fee. Now, we paid dearly to Mr. Rogers for that lot, and I believe that the extension is an important piece to our community. We're paying $50,000, I believe, to pave from that Cortez extension ourselves. Is that a correct statement?
Correct.
Okay. So we have that budgeted?
Yes.
We paid approximately $80,000 to acquire the lots over in terms of class for, let me back up on that, I apologize. We have approximately $82,000 already into this project, less the $50,000 that we would have to pay. So my point is, at what point are we going to say enough is enough? Why can't we just do the extension over to Schumacher? Why is it necessary for us to pave the dirt road? Sure, it'll make it nicer, but, I mean, if the objective of this is to have another entrance, then we can accomplish that entrance right out to the dirt road there on Schumacher. Is that road actually going to be paved all the way to the end to Blueberry?
No.
It's only going to stop at Cortez?
It's based on this project.
Okay. So that brings up my next question. At a previous meeting I had, I asked, what's going to prevent the county from coming back to us and then wanting to charge us for the remainder of that road at a future date? And I never got an answer on it. So I'm sure Ron's going to give me an answer in a minute. But there's a lot of history here, and we have a number of landowners, I listened to the audio tapes from 2014, we have a number of landowners over there that don't want to participate in this at all. We own one lot, we all pay taxes to the county, we all pay our own taxes here or assessments, we do our own roads, we do all of our work here on ourself, we really don't ask for anything from the county, we're pretty self-sufficient. And yet, for this extension, we have to pay an additional $50,000. I just, you know, too many people were against it in 2014, the board was against it, and the landowners on that Schumacher, all of those large landowners, didn't want any part of it either. So, you know, I think if we're going to pave it, just pave it to the dirt road, and then that's fine, we've got the extension now.
Ron, I'll get to you in a minute, okay? Kurt?
Yeah, I got some, first of all, I'd like to comment Ron Hanley for his efforts in helping Sunna Lake improve itself, and he's worked really hard to help us be heard at the county level, and I certainly appreciate it. Another advantage of this whole project is Schumacher gets paved, number one. It also reduces the dust for the people that live on that road, and it also enhances the entrance to Cortez Boulevard. Some of the things I don't like about it is it's not our road, so we're paying for something that's not our property. The county doesn't help Sunna Lake with our paving, I mean, they don't pay 25% of our paving costs, so why should we pay 25% of their paving costs? And the other thing is, even though the homeowners objected to this back in 2014, but today, the county or Sunna Lake District did not contact these people and say, you know, can you help us out a little bit? Can you pay a little extra? Can you give us 500 bucks, 1,000, whatever the number is? But it's just assumed that Sunna Lake would just cough up the 50 grand and would be all done with it. And the way I see this, you know, the county wins by eliminating the monthly maintenance on the road. The landowners that live on that road win because it reduces the dust, it improves the value of the property. And I think the real winner here is the county, because the county has over 1,000 lots, they're the largest landowner in Sunna Lake, and a lot of those lots are along the Cortez corridor. So, I can't speak for Ross Macbeth, but I think he's responsible for selling this property, and so if the road isn't paved, now he's got to take potential customers down the dirt road to get to the property to show them. So I think that in his mindset, at least I think his mindset would be, is, let's get this road paved so we can make the best presentation possible to prospective buyers. If you're going to bring in a track builder that's going to build 25 or 50 homes, you don't want to take them down a dirt road to show them the property. And so, you know, I'm kind of with Mark, I just got a problem paying 50 grand. I'd rather wait and see what happens, you know, get the extension done, and go to Phase Two sometime down the road.
Holly?
I pretty much agree with what everyone's saying. There's said some questions. Sunna Lake's asked to divvy up $50,000, and then when I went down there a couple days ago, I looked up the Metian Science Wood Guide, and it's all that there. I guess one rancher. And where's he at? He's one of them, I think. Sure, I'd like to see paved roads, so things like that, and I really appreciate what Ron's doing, of course, because he represents them very well. But I'm just against it. I think we ought to take this out to Cortez, out to there, to Schumacher, pay what it takes to do that, get that in and out set. I think Ortega, whoever thought that up in the beginning, did an awful good job, because that answers all the questions down Granada and all these towns over there. That's a good exit. I used to live over in Kansas, I went out that way, up through those streets, and Cortez will get another way out if it comes way down. So just to make it short, I'm against the $50,000, because that is not our road, and obviously how we're going to do it.
Ron?
This is Mike Owen. Well, good morning, glad to be here, and I appreciate the kind words, but just to bring you up to speed on how we got where we are with the $50,000. The county's road policy, which we're in the middle of trying to work on, a countywide road program that'll carry us on into the future, and of course, as you all are aware, we have a lot of shell roads throughout the county, and people are coming to us all the time about paving their road, paving their road, and there is a, it's an unwritten agreement, but it's an agreement nonetheless, that if you live on the road, that you participate in the pavement, in paying for the pavement of the road, and that participation was at a tune of 50%. Well, when we start talking about paving Schumacher, first of all, Mr. Camp, I don't know who told you that Schumacher was absolutely going to be paved, that isn't exactly the truth, but nevertheless, it's okay. And we are only going to go to the intersection of Cortez and Schumacher if we do this. But back to the participation, when it came up at the commission meeting, of course, I brought up that we wanted to get Schumacher done, and that there was funds there earmarked for Schumacher, then I was informed that, well, it's earmarked for Schumacher, but really, it's for the whole unpaved road project for the whole county. They lumped it under one name, and I've hung my hat on that the whole time, saying, this is what it says, this is what we need to do. But I'm not winning that battle. So, in the negotiations with my other commissioners, I said, look, let's come up with something that I can take back to Sunna Lakes as a participation and see if it flies. Well, the best I could do, guys, was 25%. That's the best I could do, and there's plenty of pushback. We're getting citizens still coming to the meeting saying, why are you only requiring Sunna Lakes 25%, and you're requiring all the rest of those 50%? And our argument there is that it's a collector road, and that in the event of an emergency, it's another way out of Sunna Lakes. Secondly, exactly what Mr. McCullough said, we do own, or we're going to own lots of property back there, the county is, and sure, it would benefit the county to be able to market those properties, but it would also benefit Sunna Lakes, that it would help you grow that much quicker, hopefully. So you can argue it either side of the discussion, but that's the best deal I can come up with. If you don't want to do it, it's not going to hurt my feelings, it's fine. If you want us to come back and do Cortez and not Schumacher, I'll take it back. The price may change, I don't know. I mean, a lot of it is the mobilization of all the equipment, that we can pass along some of that savings to Sunna Lakes. And the $50,000 towards Schumacher, that is a ceiling price. If we come in under $200,000, then we're going to reduce your portion of it proportionally to that 200,000. Our road and bridge supervisor kind of tells me, he's not going to put it in writing, but he thinks it will come in under that, because the base is in good shape on Schumacher, so there's not going to be a whole lot of prep work involved, it's a matter of bringing in the paving equipment. So it could very easily come in under 50, but I don't want to go back and say, I'm not going to promise you that today, but that is what the agreement says, is that anything under 200, you'll get your proportionate share of that back. So that's where we stand, we'll do whatever you want to do. Just, I'm not going to obligate the county to do Cortez for 50 grand if the whole thing isn't packaged, because I'm not sure that isn't what's in the agreement, so I can't make that promise either. We'd have to go back to the county and see, let them refigure the job, I would say.
Well, Ron, this unwritten policy that you are living under now, we're just now talking about one side of the road paying. The other side of the road, they benefit in a permanent.
You're right, and I pay it. They don't care if it's paved or not. You're exactly right, farmer doesn't care.
So these landowners, these people that have 20...
I mean, I think it's silly. It's going to increase the value of their property, but they don't want any traffic on the road.
Yeah, now. Now.
You gotta think about his kids, his grandkids selling their property off.
Yeah, so, I mean, you're absolutely right, they don't want to participate. We did have a few property owners way back that often participate, and they backed out, but this is what we're talking about.
Well, I appreciate you giving what you've got.
Public comment?
Tom Costley, resident. I'd like to ask if anybody has ever contacted the properties on Blueberry Road for their participation. I listened to the audio of the recent county commissioner meetings, and I noted that the discussion is centering on the policy, which is going to be discussed, I believe, in a public meeting that's coming up in a week or two?
Which policy?
The policy for the paving of gravel and shell roads in the county, throughout the county.
Yeah, it's an ongoing concern. We're going in phases, so we're a long way from coming up with a finished product, but it'll be discussed again.
I understand, and...
But we don't have a finished product, I mean.
The discussion so far, it appears that the impression is that the property owners, not only that are front on the road, but those that have to use it for ingress and egress, are also considered to be those who would directly benefit, if that's their only way in and out. Now, in the back, there's a couple of light manufacturing properties, there's eight duplex lots along this stretch of road, there's a multifamily facility on the corner of Ortega and Schumacher. There's a blueberry farm with a shipping and packaging facility out on Blueberry Road. There's a septic cleaning operation also on Blueberry Road, there's approximately two dozen ortogens sitting out there right now, within 100 feet or so of Blueberry Road. And since that's their only way in and out, including the trucks that are shipping blueberries for Hidden Creek Blueberry Farm, they use that road, and probably create a very good portion of the dust that the people are complaining about out there. And all those, those properties, well, the cattle ranch and the blueberry farm, those are appraised in the millions of dollars in property value. So they're paying plenty of county taxes. And I believe that in return for that, they deserve some consideration from the county, number one. Number two, their valuation is going to go up, their convenience is going to go up, and I don't see any reason why Sunna Lake should pay for it if those people are not going to participate. We have, there are about 40 homes, if you go from Cortez to the west edge of Sunna Lake, there's about 40 residences out there that all have access to US 27 through either Sunna Lake Boulevard or the Ortega Corridor that we built several years back, a number of years back, which is quite an extensive project. And I don't see that anything in terms of hurricane abatement or being able to evacuate for hurricane, I don't see that we're adding one thing. I don't, I don't, at some point in time, maybe we should pay, even extend Cortez, but for right now, we've got thousands of lots east of Cortez, between Cortez and Sunna Lake Boulevard, that are available for development, and some of them in unencumbered raw land, within several hundred yards of the golf course, that a developer should be interested in or might be interested in. We need to be marketing those, and those properties have absolutely no need to go to Cortez to get out of Sunna Lake. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's George Puffenberger, and I'm a resident. I've heard comments from the board, from Supervisor Camp, Supervisor McCullough, Edgell, and Supervisor White, all I think are significant to this request. I think one of the main purposes when you spend any of the district money is need. Benefits and need, who does it benefit? Does it benefit the majority of the district or a few? This is a classic case of benefit and a few. $50,000 I've seen in my time since I've left the board and left the district. For example, the new fire station down on EMS Station, the original price was about 200,000, 300, it's up to 800 now, something 50,000. Supervisor Camp said we've spent X number of dollars for lots. If you add the 50 to that, I think we're up about 132,000 already, aren't we? So it looks like the numbers, even though 50,000 is the max, I've been down that road many times before. It's like the old saying, you know, don't pee down my leg and try to tell me it's raining, because I've seen this stuff before. The beneficiaries of this particular resolution are the 13 or 15 lot owners. Sunna Lake doesn't get anything out of this except another entrance, which we don't need. Law enforcement will tell you, the more interesting exits you have, the more prone you are to grab and go. That's a prime example, because it's in one of the least, one of the areas where it's the least number of houses. This particular instance comes right into Cortez, which has homes on either side for at least three blocks. I don't know of any one of those homes who agree with this addition. Secondly, if developers, if they want to develop the areas between Schumacher Boulevard and Matanzas, there's a whole bunch of lots there, but there are no roads, there's no drainage in any of those lots, that's raw land right now. So I don't see a developer coming and buying any of that unless they intend to put a major investment in. One of the major issues is drainage. When we looked at selling all the property to Tanglewood, which is now west of where Tanglewood is, the issues we had there, there was no drainage for it. The southwest basin was never built, so the drainage goes west and just dissipates out there someplace. So when you start messing with drainage on Schumacher Boulevard, you've got a real issue. You might build a retention pond. I'm not sure that's going to be big enough. I guess the primary reason I say not to do it is, who does it benefit? Does it benefit the majority of the residents of Sunna Lake? The answer is clearly no. The benefits are very few. And I think the expenditure of district funds ought to be done very carefully, should be situated where it's actually needed and benefits everybody, and I don't see this as one of those projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else? Public comment?
I've heard everybody up here, including the board, are against this. Myself, I'm for it. I see it as an excellent opportunity for us to develop just west of Cortez, east of Cortez, and people to come in and out. That is an excellent way for our people to have an opportunity to get out of here without having to go through a residential area that is full of kids during the school year, weaving in and out, like Wally said, through daytime area where school's in and out. I don't like going that way. I end up going way out of my way, going out Sunna Lake Boulevard out to 27 to go to Walmart, where I could just go right out Cortez and down Schumacher Road. And there's a lot of people that would go that way if they could. And a lot of people go down Cortez and go through that damn, around that corner to get out to Schumacher. So give it a little bit more thought. You know, I saw some, what they did over there at our building across the street here, I'm putting on that new roof, that's a lot of money spent for a roof that could have been done a lot cheaper. A lot of money. And $50,000 for this, that's pretty cheap. Spending $154,000 for electronic sign up on 27, when I see electronic signs out here on the highway right now, advertising, you can advertise on this sign? Come on. We don't need to spend that kind of money. So $50,000 is pretty cheap to get something that we could use.
Thank you, Rick. Anybody else? Okay, back to the board?
The county, I met with the county commissioner, Ron, about development of the future of lots, right and left of Cortez, right?
It was last year, I think, when it was...
Yeah. And thinking about the marketing programs and things like that, that development area over there is way down there. It's, we could build this road, Cortez out, pave all of Schumacher. I would hope that I'd be alive, still sell those lots back, it's just way down there. Yeah, there's development back there, but it's always, you can't get there. It's all a mess.
Anybody else? I just want to thank you, Ron, for putting together what you could, but I haven't said anything, but I was led to believe, too, that Schumacher was going to be paved. That's why I was for the 50,000 that's in the budget now, so... That's why I was for the $50,000 that's in the budget now, so I'm not in favor of paving Schumacher Road at all. I mean, with our expense, so, but thank you for doing what you can. Chrissy?
Supervisor Edgell?
No.
Supervisor Camp?
No.
Supervisor McCullough?
No.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
No.
Okay, Resolution Number 201706-23-37, a resolution of the Sunning Lake of Sebring Improvement District to approve change order number three with excavation point for an increase in the amount of $11,250 to repair a district drainage culvert in Magnolia Place. Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Comment?
This change order will repair about 60 to 80 feet of a 48-inch drainage pipe that runs, I believe it runs east to west, and this drainage pipe is on the back of the property line of 5024 Sugar Bay, 5020 Sugar Bay, and 5125 Magnolia Place. This pipe is the main drainage system that runs from the corner pond on Deer all the way back to the wetland there. I think that's from the back of Friar's Cove area. The joints are linking in the pipe, and the sand is what's causing the holes in the residence yard. So if you have an opportunity, you know, Mike Curley can show you that area. It's been this way for some time, I believe.
About three years, they contacted us, and every year it's getting worse and worse, and this year it was really, when we went over there, we called, we went over there, and it's really bad, and it's got to be addressed.
So if you can imagine the size of this pipe, you can literally walk into it, it's that big. But it's not the pipe that needs to be replaced, I believe, it's the joints, right? Because it's sinking.
The joint, right, exactly.
Okay, any comment?
Should they patch that, Mike, or they don't have to put a new pipe in, is that correct?
No, no, no. He's going to, well, he's going to patch what they can, they may have to replace some, but until they actually dig it up, they actually had one of their employees go inside and go underground in the pipe because it was 48 inches, and he said it was a rough shape. And about three years ago, they contacted us, and, you know, Chris didn't have the money at the time, so they contacted us last year, and then this year he said it's got to get done. And we went over there and absolutely, I took Drew with me, and it absolutely needs to be done, so.
Okay.
Because it's a safety issue right now.
Any other comments from the board? Public comment? Okay, Chrissy?
Supervisor Camp?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell?
Yes.
President Gilpin?
Yes.
Add-on items?
None.
Petitions and communications?
Yes, we have four presented to you today. The first one is from Ashantel Dennis. She owns a vacant lot at 5400 Granada Boulevard. She is requesting a waiver of the late fees as well as the legal fees. The penalties, or the late fees is $419 on this piece of property with the attorney fees of $210 for a total of $629. She did not have that in her letter, so I presented that to you as what the penalties and the late fees are on this property. She wants to, she wants to pay it off in full, but she would like the authorization of waiver. Now, the district already had to pay the attorney for the demand letter, so we've, you know, that's part of her. Any type of foreclosure, we do add on the legal fees to the properties. Is Ms. Dennis here?
Do you need any, you know, any vote on it or anything?
I...
Do you want to consent?
It's up to the board, but, you know, presenting this type of waiver, you know, our finance department and myself denied the waiver of this amount.
Thank you.
But of course, you know, she's presenting this to the board today.
I think it's fine if you've denied, I mean...
The denial's fine, of course, I understand, yeah. That should be taken up into divorce.
Right. Or attorney.
The second one is from a Joan Schumacher. She just has a few pictures for you on code enforcement.
All right, thank you.
Is that Joan? Yeah, we did. Sorry about that. The third petition is from a Mr...
Oh, she's up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do I need this?
Yeah, you need to talk into it.
Hi, my name's Joan Schumacher, and I live on Matanzas. And I had read in The Highlands New Sun, probably about a month ago, about this issue of tiny houses. And I thought, well, wait a minute. The issue of a tiny house doesn't seem a high priority. So I just went around and did a couple little things. Number one, I didn't realize it's not an issue of code, I thought it was code, though it's not. But on this little letter and the accompanying pictures, I did note that we need to maybe look at things that are more important, and as it's been noted already this morning, need and benefit. Now, if this is just a passing fancy with the board and people commenting on tiny houses, it did hit the newspaper. So my whole issue on this is code violations, there's a company picture, on the third page there's issue, and I, part of them are lawns cut, stuff in lawns, cars, things like that. I mean, you want the community to look nice on entrance streets, and you take that first circle and you're in Ponce de Leon, those pictures are three houses down. That's not very good-looking. The other violations were weeds, you couldn't even get into one of the garages. The other ones, just aesthetic-looking, and if you really want the facility to perhaps entertain people moving here, let's have it looking good entering. The second are issues of, one is Ortiz and Schumacher, where the road is crumbling to the right. Unfortunately, when I took the picture, it had just rained, so you can't see the chuck hole that'll probably eat your axle. The middle picture is some vandalism that's happened repeatedly on Matanzas, few mailboxes knocked down three times over the year. And the fourth picture is the drainage issue, where last year we had the walking catfish, and as the rain subsided and the water soaked into the ground, the catfish died, and then we had buzzards. So in the hierarchy of small, tiny house, I think we have other things to address. I appreciate it, thank you.
Where's Lake Joan at?
It's on Matanzas.
Okay.
Right across the street from those mailboxes.
Oh. Mike, you want to answer this?
Yeah, well, I'll start, Joan, and say that, you know, I agree, there is a problem with a lot of the stuff that you took there, but small houses are a problem too, but, you know, it's frustrating to all of us, I'm sure, that the code enforcement, and we are having a meeting, and I hope that you could come. I don't know if it'll help, because I've been on the board a year and a half, and it gets more frustrating. I get it from my wife, you know, every time she goes to the store, she comes back and says, "What's that boat setting there for?" What's the, you know, and I understand, it's frustrating to me, and I don't know how to solve the problem, but I can guarantee you that I think most of us here are trying, but these things are really tough, and I just think it's, we got to get somehow tougher on our landlords that are renting to these people, because I believe most of them are rentals, and I shouldn't say anything more than that, but we share your frustrations, so, but just keep coming, keep talking, but there also is a problem though with, you know, and I agree that it was brought up about the small houses, we don't want them, but we also, I want to get this place cleaned up, but it's really tough.
I appreciate the comment, and my whole thing on the tiny houses was just, we got other things to do.
Yeah, I understand that.
You want me to please me and say, "I'll fill," I'll have something to say.
Anything else?
Yeah, I wanted to talk about the tiny houses, because I've been around seeing them at Sebring and so forth, and Kurt knows more about this and the rest of it, but I don't want anybody building that red house next to my house. I just spent $4 billion for a home, and I don't want that next to it, because when somebody goes into the scampfles on something, you sell my house, that's what I'm allowing money on, right here. So that's why I say address it, along with all these other things, but the code enforcement's really important. But we got to get this right, because it just can't make, we just can't make a rule. We got to do some counting of the rules and so forth.
But isn't there an issue of a thousand square feet? Is that for us building a house?
That depends on where you're at.
It's all where?
It's all over the place. That's what we want to address, and it's that care, because they can't go and build next to you and ruin the price of your house.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we don't have anything in the rules here on building a house with the minimum square footage.
It's understood.
We abide by the county code, or deed restrictions, and it is a thousand square feet. And just to give you an update, we've had meetings with Ross Macbeth, which is the county lawyer, and we've had positive meetings with him concerning this, and so this is a work in progress right now.
Yeah, yeah, most of the, the indent of pictures I handed you were other tiny houses. Now, if you had a carport or garage, those don't look so bad. So that was my whole issue, yeah. That house that I initially showed was a house that someone built to have people stay in instead of going to a hotel, wasn't here. But I understand the tiny houses, but if you can't take care of the existing issues, I think that's more of a problem.
We're going to try to do both.
Thank you.
We'll try, but I think your participation is welcome, so I'm glad that...
Absolutely. I'll come to the...
Very good.
And I'll bring more...
Okay, thank you.
Our third communication is from Dave Halbick regarding Tanglewood. Any comments on that letter?
I think, you know, I've read this, and Dave, you, what do you have to say about all this?
Well, the one, one of the things that I brought up to Tanya that I think would be a good idea is, is I still, I still am of the opinion that this is a perpetual agreement. The question is whether or not it's, there's been any sort of breach over the time that it's been in effect. My suggestion to Tanya was that we get in touch with Tanglewood and see if they, I'm sure that they probably have representation, they've got, they've got an attorney somewhere, and to sit down and see if we can hash out amendment to this agreement or something that, you know, that, because I don't think it was the most well-worked agreement in the world when it was originally created. So rather than pick a fight at this point, I think probably the best thing to do is to contact their attorney and see if we can figure out an agreement that everybody's happy with.
I'd like it if you would, if you'd do that, and then report back to us, and anything else from you guys? Just do that, David, thank you.
And the fourth communication from the board dated June 19th is from the Manor Hill Property Owners Association.
I don't have a comment, I mean, it's just...
Okay. Staff reports?
I just have a quick update, Jim Kurtzborn, general manager. Tanya and I did have a phone conference with Cliff Scholes and CJ Fishman, our clubhouse renovation architect and his kitchen consultant, and the context of that discussion was just the proposed renovations that they had put together, their estimate, and we discussed with them looking into downsizing and relooking at their estimate of relocating the bar, looking at different options with the patio enclosure, reassessing the kitchen equipment, the need and the type, and also the size of the expansion. We're also working with Adam Shepherd of CT Design, their company has done some work for some ClubCorp Properties, Herschel Pezernick of Acme Restaurant, who's done some Western Golf and Billy Casper Golf renovations of kitchens on properties, and then Rob Leach of Edward Dunn, who's probably the biggest supplier of kitchen equipment in Florida, to get their opinions on basically the scope of work and size of our renovation. So just an update on that is ongoing. Ron Garrel will be in this afternoon to do a final approval for the Tees, Tea Project, where we're at final grade, and they're expecting to sod on Monday, God willing, and the rains cooperating. And also, Tanya and I spoke with Henry Delozier yesterday. We're continuing to work with him to clarify his services and to put together pretty much more an outline of each service, what he suggests in order, and what those costs would be. So I would expect by the July or August meeting to have better, to have a final recommendation to the board, and that's all I have.
Any other staff reports?
Good morning, Tenille Dury Smith, Community Services Director. I just want to comment, Camp is going well, we just, today will be the end of our third week. I have a little funny story to share, you know, we have to sometimes share space with some of our groups in the community center, and they're very accommodating, and the body toning class in the morning, I walked in the other morning, and a lot of the kids were participating in the class. I just thought that was a cute, that was really, it was really neat that they were, they were welcoming them to work out with them. So, but everything's going on with Camp. As you all know, one of our biggest events, Independence Day celebration, is coming up on July 3rd. Everything's in line with that, and hopefully Mother Nature cooperates. I know it's been probably about three years since we've had a rain-free event, but hopefully this year we'll, we'll get to experience that. The last thing I want to do, I want to introduce Kayla Lockhart. Kayla, if you want to stand up and say hi to everybody. Kayla is a familiar face in the district office, she was my community services assistant. She's been with us for four years. She started at the pool, came over three years ago in September to be my assistant, and then now she's back at the pool, but at a, as a recreation specialist. She took Jonathan Joel's position as a, you know, more of a leadership role at the pool, so you'll be seeing her over there, and there's lots of, a couple of new faces and pool staff over there as well right now. So next time you're by there, just stop in and say hi. And I think, I think that's it. Thank you.
Omar DeSous, Finance Director. We don't have any staff or treasury reports this month, but I prepared a small presentation to give you an update as to where we stand with the maintenance building. So Chris is going to pull that up, I have some extra pictures and some financial updates So here's some pics inside, they're pretty much moving forward, almost ready for drywall. We've taken some pictures of the interior so you can see. There we go. So they got pretty much all the framing done, windows installed, there's some cleanup that needs to be done before the drywall goes up, but we're, me and Mike are meeting with EO Cook biweekly to make sure, to track the progress and everything goes up. The tractor pole barn building is up. So here's that building, took some pictures, they're starting to do some grading to get ready for the asphalt that's going to be laid. We still have the fuel wash bay building that still needs to be completed. We still have the fuel wash bay building that still needs to be completed. So we've, we've prepared to slide our, we've, so far, to date, we've had 10 approved change orders, either decrease or, or increase. The majority of the decreases have been the direct purchases of the building and the concrete that we purchased in order to save sales tax. Some of the things that we've increased is the fire alarm that came in, the dumpster extension, additional fencing and some electrical upgrades. And here's the financials as to where we stand in regards to the budget. The initial budget that we was approved during this year's budget was 1.7 million. To date, we've only, we've spent a million, so we're about 60% completed with this project. The new set date for completion is set for September 20th. The original date was August 8th, but it's moved to September 20th because some of the change orders, they've asked for six day extension, five day extensions because of some of the changes.
You pansy.
I'm not sure why it's not.
Mike, that's your fault.
Mike's been a little lenient with them, but.
No, it's Florida. Florida.
So yeah, we spent a million out of the 1.7, so we're on track. If you guys want to see this PowerPoint or want me to email it to you or print it. Oh, you have it? Okay, perfect. You have any questions?
Thank you. Any other staff reports?
All right. Litigation report is essentially unchanged. We talked at the last meeting about the, the situation with Ayala and it being under appeal. The one change that has happened to update, and it just happened, I believe, earlier this week or late last week, is we, our, our attorneys had filed our appeal on the, the three portions that were not dismissed. Well, the, the plaintiffs have filed an appeal for the, I guess it was four or five counts that were dismissed. So those will be decided at the same time, in, in my opinion, at the second DCA. And so we'll have either, we'll be going, hopefully we'll be going, we'll be, we'll be released and, and all of the counts will be dismissed. But if not, then we'll be proceeding a trial once that decision's made. But because of those, this is a, a non-final order, nothing's going to be moving forward until decision's made about this, you know, on, on this issue.
This is due on the district board, right?
It's gone up to the second DCA, correct? For, for the, for the appeal. I've drafted a letter for the, regarding the RV part. Can you pass those out, Chris? It's just a proposal, you know, about moving forward and getting some hard numbers on people that are actually willing to pay to, to lease some slots. I've, I've left a spot for a, a deposit. Leave it up to the, we'll probably bring this back to the board at a future meeting once we are included with the, in the resolution to decide whether or not we're going to build the, you know, build the park. But basically we want some people to, if you, if they want a spot, we want them to commit monetarily, you know, to, to give us some numbers on moving forward. We're also, I'm also finalizing, finalizing my research on the, we've had a, some people that have come forward about purchasing district liens in order to, you know, may basically assist people that are having trouble paying the district assessments. They don't want to just loan money because it's not secured. And so what they're talking about doing is potentially buying the district's liens and then they can work out a, 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 a deal with the homeowner for, you know, personal payback. But the district would get its money and we could, you know, therefore stop any foreclosure proceedings. And if, for whatever reason, the repayment schedule didn't work out, the person that bought the district's lien would be able to then move forward and, and foreclose. But we're paid and, you know, that's generally what we're, that's the issues that we want to take care of. And as Supervisor McCullough mentioned, I'm in the process of finalizing the drafting on the proposed, I don't want to call them changes, but amendments to the, the land use regulations where we would, which basically what we're going to be requesting that the county do is to change some of the land zoning, because there's, basically focused on the residential properties, because the R1 zoning is the one that has the 750 minimum square foot. R, if it's on the golf course here in the district, there's, that's where the, it goes up to the thousand square foot. But if it's not on the golf course, then the minimum square foot is, is only the 750. And those change up. And with our meeting with Ross Macbeth, that was when we, you know, he, he said we can put forward basically some proposed new land zones. And we could change an R1, you know, we called it, instead of it being zoned R1, it would be R1 Sun and Lake. And that would not have a minimum 750 square foot. It would have a 1,200 or 1,500 or whatever number that you guys decide on. And that's what we're, how we're going to propose to be, be dealt with through the county. And I think the major, the major expense there will be notification. Because when, that'll be a decision to be made by the county, but the county will want us to send out all the required notices to the landowners. So that'll be coming forward probably the next meeting or two.
So are we going to discuss the deposit number or what?
We can. We do, if you want to do it during board discussion, or, or what I just figured we do is, is that'd be something to consider and we'll put it in any resolution to move forward on the, on the project.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I thought we were getting final numbers on what it costs. Because if it's going to be around a couple hundred thousand dollars, I, you know, it just, we're doing all this for exercise again.
We have it in the budget books, so we were going to talk about it today.
Okay. General Manager's report.
Tanya Kennedy, General Manager. The Calatrava Avenue Drainage Project is complete with the exception of the yards that need floor tam grass. Our floor tam fields are flooded and it could be two to three weeks before the contractor is able to get floor tam grass. On Sunday, I'll be attending the Florida Government Finance Officers Association Conference. And my classes start, like I said, on Sunday. We'll be back in the office on Thursday. Mike Hurley and I have an appointment next week with Sheriff Blackman to discuss the traffic and speeding concerns within the district. This week, the county approved the district to participate in their insurance plan. The rates for these insurance plans have not yet been finalized, so it's, it should be July or so when we expect those rates to be finalized. Each year, we receive a letter from the State of Florida Joint Legislative Audit Committee because our annual audit has repeat findings regarding the fifth third note. On June 1st, the district requested a hearing with the State of Florida Joint Legislative Audit Committee. Tom Gonzalez of Thompson Sizemore Gonzalez, attorneys out of Tampa, assisted the district with this request. So I'll keep you updated as soon as I do hear whether or not they're going to grant us a hearing for that issue. Residents should be receiving postcards any day regarding the district's rule on garbage cans. Our code enforcement has already issued a few warnings. So now we're, we're about three months into this new, to the new garbage collection system here in the district, so everyone should receive a postcard within the next couple of days. Last, Mr. Norcross proposed a feather flag advertising idea to the board last week. We received a quote from a local vendor for $1,200. That's for four 12-inch poles with four flags. We expect the flags to last about six to eight months. I, I told Mr. Norcross in the email that we would, we're going to be waiting to see what's decided with our electronic billboard and our other marketing plans before we move forward with that idea. I have a very quick presentation for the board before we move into budget. Can you see that okay?
No.
No, you cannot.
I got it. You have the hard.
Do you have it here? Okay.
Where did I get that? Sorry. I don't think I got one. I wasn't here, yeah. I must be home. My fault again.
What is a budget deficit? A budget deficit is the amount by which expenditures exceed income in any one fiscal year. How much is the general fund deficit? Currently, we have budgeted revenues of $3,800,000 with budgeted expenses of $4,300,000 with a deficit of $512,000. Of the $512,000 deficit, golf operating and capital expenses total $844,000, or 20% of that number. And page 44 of the budget document, as we go through, you'll see that the deficit does not include the RV storage or the kitchen expansion project. Okay? Why does the general fund have a deficit? Assessments and charges for services are not sufficient to cover operating expenses and capital equipment projects for fiscal year 2017, 2018. And my last slide, how can the district balance the budget? I've listed five ways here. Of course, it could be combination of or any or all, but increase general fund assessment rates, number one. Number two, increase golf and restaurant revenues from memberships, public play and banquets. Number three, cut expenses in the general and golf funds. Number four, increase utility rates or revenues to subsidize. And number five, use general fund reserves, which is not recommended, but we've done that to balance the budget for presentation purposes today.
Now, there's other, there's other ways to cut. These are just five.
I just put five on the slide for you.
Because I can.
Thank you, thank you for the time. I just wanted to show you that as we move into budget discussions today.
Unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Public comment?
Tom Coste, resident. Couple of things. First of all, I'd like to compliment the district staff on their choice of colors for the new maintenance building. I've mentioned this to Tanya in the past. The color scheme, while it's under construction, the green with the red oxide primary that's on the structural steel, I think looks very attractive. It's kind of similar to the, the new and modern color scheme. I believe it's Chili's has got that same scheme. And if you look around at some of the other fast food restaurant change, they, they all appear to be going to a more modern and updated pattern of colors. And I think as we go forward, that we should consider matching all of our buildings to a color, which they were in the past. And I would suggest that the color of the maintenance building we look as one is, looked at as one that we might want to spread throughout the district with all of our facilities. The other thing I wanted to bring up was that I had occasion to speak to the registered agent for Granada Shores. Granada Shores is a piece of acreage, which if you look across Lake Granada, it's, starts at the corner of Edgewater and it goes through those woods and all the way over to the beginning of these tiled roof homes on Catalina. The owner is a doctor who's been here for some time and he's been, he's been paying considerable amount of money, actually on a monthly basis, to cover the assessments on that piece of property. It has been plotted to include 48 villas, a community pool, and a looped road that actually starts, would start very close to the corner of Granada and Edgewater. Units one through four actually are plotted to be on the corner, fronting on Edgewater in those woods, just south of the parking lot for our community center. The registered agent indicated to me that the doctor is willing and ready to listen to any kind of proposals that might come from here with regard to beginning any kind of a project over there in terms of our stay and play program. There are utilities along the road. It wouldn't have to be a major expense as it might be to try to put four condos, four villas on the golf course out here, which has no parking, no road access, no utilities in place. So he just asked me to make sure that everyone here knows that the doctor is open and willing to enter into any kind of discussion the district might have to get together and start a program. So thought I'd bring that up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
George Puffenberger, resident. I only have a question. What's the code enforcement meeting going to be about, besides code enforcement? Are you going to review the current one? Are you talking about new items? What's the purpose of it?
Correct. We're, we've, we've started a process a while back of amending the, the, or having the county help us amend the, the code enforcement stuff. And so that's what we're doing is, is finalizing, what was Mr. Pratt, Mr. Pruitt?
Pritt.
Pritt, Mr. Pritt. It was an independent council the district hired to help revise those. The county gave us its input. And so all we're, we have to do is to finalize what we want to take to the county for adoption.
So was that the gentleman who was here and made a presentation one time?
Correct.
So I understand, the guru of code enforcement throughout the state?
Correct.
Had some real issues with that, with his comments. That's why, the meeting is what date?
June 30th.
June 30th at 9:00 AM.
One thing for you, Mike. Remember this, as we have my neighbor across the street. The owner has spent $38,000 to repair the house when he moved. Isn't Carmo wonderful?
It was the rent. He rented the house out to someone. We cited him many, many times and finally he asked a person to leave.
Okay. Any more public comment? Okay, discussion to and from the board. Kurt, you want to start?
Sure, I'll start. The district sent out this water quality report, which I thought was done very well. I guess my question is, I assume this goes to water and sewer customers? Is that, who was on the mailing list? Who did you mail this to, right?
All the water customers, yes.
So I guess why, why wasn't that included, like in our monthly newsletter or, or bills that you send out to the water customers instead of paying separate postage on something like this?
Couple of years ago, I felt like that report was an informative report and to, and to have it separate like that, I felt it was that important to have it separate. This is something we implemented about three years ago. And, I mean, if, if y'all don't feel it's that informative, we can just post it on our website and.
No, I didn't say it wasn't informative. I just said, why, why pay postage on mailing it when you are already paying postage to mail out the bill? You can include it with the bill. That's all.
I, I don't know the answer to that. About the inserer, inserer machine and postage costs, I, I don't know. I think the thickness of it is an issue as far as the inserer. We probably would have had to manually insert it, right?
Just to, just to clarify, that report, we have a company who, who creates it for us, Gemini Group, and it's included in their price for creating it. They ship it out for us. So we don't do any administrative work. It doesn't cost us any postage. It's included in the, in the package.
It does cost.
Well, yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that the company actually mailed it for us, too.
All right, just making a comment. All right, our aquatics contract that we have with our pond people, is that on a need basis? Or is that on a, like a quarterly or monthly basis?
Monthly.
Okay.
They're here monthly.
Because I see the algae's starting to grow again. I just want, if they're going to come in and clean it up right away.
They're here monthly. Do you know what, what ponds or what, what holes?
No, not really. But if they're here monthly, that's really all I need to know.
Okay.
And also in Jim Kurtzborn's golf committee meeting notes, he mentioned that Joe Branson got approval from the board for something to go on October 27th. And I don't remember approving anything for Joe Branson. And I'm just wondering what, get a clarification on that, I guess.
All I know is that Joe come up to me and asked me, as a supervisor, if I had a problem with moving it. And I said, no.
So that, you're speaking for the board?
No, no. I, he said he was going to contact all the boards. So I, did anybody else get contacted?
So what's it about anyway?
They want to move it. Andy probably can, or Jim can talk about it.
I'll get back to Mr. Branson. Originally, when we were setting the calendar, the, there's a, a conflict, I would say, with the Halloween that happens here in Highlands County and a wedding that we already have scheduled and the Halloween event that the MGA runs. And the MGA wanted to run their event on the Friday before Halloween, which corresponded with the Board of Supervisors meeting. So what I, what I'll do is I'll get back to Mr. Branson to go through whether we can present, present it to the board to get formal approval.
Yeah. Because he, I asked him point blank, are you going to talk to everyone? And he said, yeah, of course. Anything else, Kurt?
No.
I have a question, Dave. I got a high sign from a public commenter that wants to speak. What, what do, do I let him speak or do I? Great, can you make a quick?
Ray Brooks, resident. I know you guys are talking about budgets. So my question would be, how much money do we have to work with? And what are you gearing your budget, your expenditures? What, what's the number we're working with? I mean, how much you all got to spend this year?
And once again, we're not, we're not equipped really to answer.
No, I understand. If somebody can get back to me and say, hey, we approved $5 million this year because we have $5 million to spend.
We haven't approved anything yet, but our budget is proposed at fourteen million dollars with a 1.2 million dollar kitchen expansion and a $200,000 RV and storage, but we have not approved any of these monies.
No, I understand.
So, September is when the final budget adoption will be.
I'm sorry, when, September?
September is when the final budget adoption will happen.
Okay, so in September, we'll know how much we're going in the hole, if indeed we are going in the hole.
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Okay, Mark?
I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time, but last, last meeting, we discussed a new policy manual for the golf operations. And one of the things I said I were doing at this particular meeting was to come back with a, at least a list, because we're, there were a lot of items on the initial list, and come back with a list of the things that Jim and I felt were available in print somewhere that can be compiled into a single manual. And you should have that list in front of you. And Jim gave his blessings pretty much on all of it, correct me if I'm wrong, gave his blessings, because these things do, as I say, exist, so I think it's a good start. There will be a number of other items that will have to be discussed at length, because they tend to be a little more dicey. One of the things that he did come back with in an email to me was, he was a little bit concerned about publishing rates as it pertains to group rates, i.e., I guess, Tanglewood rates, Highlands Ridge rates, and any special group rates. He would rather just say, we offer a group rate. And I understand somewhat of his reasoning behind that, is if one group sees somebody getting a rate at, let's say hypothetically, $30, and another group says, we have a rate at $38, and they're gonna turn around and say, well, why is that? I'm not so sure I agree with the philosophy of not making these rates available at least to the board, so we can understand what is potentially happening. So, with that said, I'm not sure what the individuals feel about publishing rates for special groups or not.
First of all, I can imagine anything else being...
Oh, there are.
The only reason to think it out is, is why can't we have standardized rates? Why can't we do, group A is over there, and group B is over here, both pay $35. Instead, we're gonna do it...
I think, I think, guys, we're gonna talk about this at the budget.
And that's why I didn't know if this was the appropriate time to say it.
We'll come up with this when we get into the budget.
Okay, sounds good.
All right.
The only thing I got to mention is, I'm going to miss the July 13th and the 21st meeting.
Good for you. Is that it, Larry?
That's it.
I just have a few questions. Andy, I got a email from one of our constituents on Matanza, and he's, he said he called the county, or not the county, he called the recycle people, and he wants to turn in his bin. They told him to leave it out, and they'll eventually get it. He asked me, Mike, he said, I don't think that's gonna work, because I just was hammered about leaving stuff out. So, what, what should I tell him? Or you wanna get back to me later and figure it out?
The county, the number, did you call?
He did, he called the number.
They told him that?
They told him to leave it out there.
Did the county give an indication of how long it would take to pick it up?
No, no.
Okay.
He said, point blank, they said, leave it out there till we come get it.
Okay.
You know that wouldn't happen, you're talking about, because we're at ninety days.
We are.
We're smaller.
Well, of course, this would be an exception to our code enforcement. I mean, to allow the county to pick up these recycle bins, or what about exchanging the large ones for the small ones? I know that's another topic, but what would you suggest that this person do?
I think the best way for us to do it is to contact us, us to pick it up, and have an area where the county can come, because there's quite a few homes that wanna go through the smaller containers. So, maybe if we could find an area to put the ones we wanna exchange, and have the county come and exchange, and then we'll bring them to the house. I mean, I think that's probably the best way, because if they leave them out, the next-door neighbor's gonna say, well, why did you cite this guy? When, and also, I think the best way for us to do it is to contact the county, Tenille's gonna work with them, Bob's gonna work with them, and find out who wants to make the exchange.
Okay.
We will pick them up, we'll make the change and bring them back.
I'll get, I'll give you the...
Well, I don't know legally, that's another question for the county. Can, will the county allow us to do that? This is the first I've heard of it, so, you know, distribution of the cans, I think they have, it's a barcoding system.
They are barcoded.
So, I know, exchanging is another thing, but if they just wanna turn it in, and they don't need another one, that's a...
Could we settle the issue by, you call the county, say, look, we got this call, and this way, that's all we want? What do you want us to do?
In that situation, if he just contacts us and let us know that his can will be there, because the county's gonna pick it up, and they're not exchanging it, right? This person?
No, he said to give, he...
Just to give it back?
Give it back.
Okay, okay.
And Mike, I'll give you the guy's name.
Just contact us so we can have it documented. Because there might be some other people in the same situation. We'd like to know, we'd like to hear.
Jenny was just, I mean, Jenny was just telling me that each can has a barcode on it. And the barcode goes to your house. So, we have to make sure, you know...
Well, Mike, I'll give you the guy's name, and I'm sure you're contacting, okay. I have a friend that bought a couple places, and they have a bunch of cardboard, and I talked to Mike about, she had, she had to fly back home, one of my wife's friends, and I said I'd put it out, and I got this thing in the mail, it said, don't put anything out if it's not in the bin. Because I talked, talked to Mike, and it's cardboard, and we have no place to get rid of cardboard.
We have the dumpsters still.
The dumpster says no cardboard.
There not a cardboard dumpster over there?
There was.
There was.
There was?
Unless they took it that day to bring it back.
I'll go check, I'll go check.
Or we have bulk pickup here in the district, so every, every other week, you have, on your day, which is Thursday, you can put out bulk items on the bulk day, right? And then the next following Thursday is yard waste. So, it does alternate, so I believe cardboard could be categorized as a bulk waste.
I'll put it out for on...
Yes, you just put it next to your can, and they'll come pick it up on the bulk day.
Okay. Just a comment on Tom's, made a comment about Edgewater and Granada. I could probably tell you, Tom, why that's not being sold. The place is a pit over there. I mean, that's one of our problems with our renters. I mean, it's a mess, and that's one of the places, I hope we can get cleaned up, and maybe they can put something there, somebody, I'm not in favor of us doing it, but...
About the woods?
No, the people that live around right there at that corner, it is a mess.
I like this, this is a flat.
We have a lot of, okay, we have a lot of problems around Sunland Lake with cars and trailers and boats, and if you went to the, if you go just to the corner of Edgewater and Granada, and look left and look right, we have got the biggest mess over there you can possibly want. And it might all be legal, but it's, we got mowers there that people make a living doing. We got two or three boats there that are in the driveway, and there's trash. I mean, so that's why I hope this code enforcement thing, and I don't know if that's what Joan was talking about, but it's a real problem, it's real frustrating. So, if we can get some of that straightened out, maybe we can have somebody buy some of this property. Okay, anything else? Okay, do we adjourn or go right into the...
Why don't we take a five-minute recess?
Do we, are we gonna take a recess?
Recession's five minutes.
Okay, do we have a motion to recess for a few minutes?
Five minutes.
We have a motion to recess in five minutes.
Do you need a motion? Motion to recess, five minutes.
Second.
Second.
All right.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay.
We're gonna bring this meeting back to order?
No.
That's all you do.
Okay. Tanya, I kinda would like to turn it over to you and let you do what you wanna do.
The first thing this morning that we're gonna discuss is golf, and I believe, Jim, we're gonna, I'll open the floor to you.
Thanks, Tanya. Jim Kurtzborn, General Manager, Sunland Lakes Golf Club. We all know Andy Kessling, and to Andy's right is David Evangelista. David's our Regional Manager of Marketing for Billy Casper Golf Club. And I've asked David here, because he's, he's been a GM before, and he works with a lot of the southeast region on pricing, and he has a lot of knowledge based on maximizing your revenues through dynamic pricing. So, at this time, I'll just turn the floor over to David for just a general overview of the golf industry, and how, really, it's been going on for years, but it's actually been brought to the internet, I don't know if you'd wanna say ten years ago, when you start to look at dynamic pricing of things like Golf Now. Anything that's, to me, an expiring commodity, like a plane, you know, a plane seat, a hotel seat, you know, once the plane takes off, all those empty seats are not generating revenue. So, one of the things you see in golf is that you have different markets, you have weaker markets, and you have stronger markets. You know, in a, in a strong market, you know, you're all familiar with Tim McGinley. Tim worked for us, he's in Chicago now, at a standalone course right next to O'Hare. Basically, they don't even hold tournaments there, because the demand for the first tee's so great that people just walk up and play. So, that's one market. Then obviously, you see our Highlands County market, you know, where we have a smaller population and thirteen, eighteen-hole equivalents, where you're basically competing with a lot of other courses to get play. So, David, at this time, if you can kinda give us just a general overview of dynamic pricing, and how you see it used at different clubs and in different markets to utilize and achieve the best financial benefit?
Thanks, Jim. I would like to say that I've been, I used to work for Kitson and Partners years ago, so I've been associated with this facility proudly for quite a long time, and I know a lot about this, this market, and I always love working here. This is, you know, I always talk about how Sunland Lake really is one of our flagship properties that we have in the southeast. It's just a fantastic facility, and love helping out here. Dynamic pricing is, has really changed the industry. It used to be, the dates used to be, we would set the rates, we would post our rates, and put it, put out some newspaper ads, and hope people would come out and play. And those, those days are gone. It used to be that, you know, we could set the rate, and if people wanted to play us, they would, they would pay it, and there was plenty of golfers to go around, not enough inventory, and it was easy. My job was easy back in those days. Not so much anymore. The, the amount of golfers continue to decline, it's, has leveled off here the last few years, and the amount of inventory, other golf courses' competition in the market has increased significantly. So, we have to get creative and figure out ways to, to fill our tee sheets. So, we use different tools, like Golf Now, and, and other third-party resellers. We use our own marketing tools that we have, and our loyalty programs, membership programs. And it's different in, in, a lot, a lot of the markets are different. Orlando is, is different than, say, South Florida, depending on the time of the year. So, you, you just don't really know, and so you just have to get into a market and see. So, so we are constantly looking at, how do we adjust the rates to fill our underutilized times? Everybody can fill those times that everybody wants to play. It's those times that people don't wanna play, and sometime, in some markets, it's, you know, people don't wanna play between eleven and three in the summertime, because it's, I don't know, 4,000 degrees or something like that in the shade. So, you gotta get creative and figure out how do we get folks out there. Market like this, and I know the, the members like to play a little bit later in the day, so it's the morning times that we have to fill, and so you have to get creative. And, and just like James said, that, you know, if that tee time goes empty and goes away, that's lost revenue that you don't have. Now, you don't ever wanna give it away to the point where, you know, you're devaluing your property and devaluing the experience, so it's a fine line that you have to walk. You wanna fill the times as best you can, at a rate that, that works for everybody. I, I tell clients all the time, that as much as we like to think that we set rates, we don't. Our customers set the rates. They're gonna tell us what they're willing to pay for, for our product and our experience. So, we need to find out what that is, and be diligent in that process, which we are. We use many tools to figure out what that is, and a big piece of it is filling it with groups. I, I've said over the years, and I'll continue to say it, give me a full field shotgun every day, and I'll hit plan every day, because groups will come out and play in inclement weather, or at least a threat of inclement weather, where the general public is just filling the tee time, will say, you know what, I'll just go play tomorrow, it doesn't, it looks a little sketchy out there. But if they're gonna play with a group, they're more likely to come out, and they're more likely to spend other monies while they're here at the property as well. So, we love groups, and, and we work very hard to, to fill our off-peak times, especially at a place like Sunland Lake, with groups. And I'll be glad to take any questions that anybody has.
Excellent.
Thanks, David. And I'm glad we're having this discussion, because I think when, when you, I mean, we have a district club, but we have members that live in the district, and they're concerned for the district, but they're also the consumer. And, and that, that makes it difficult when you're kind of a consumer owner. And so, the reason Andy's here is that it's Andy's job, he negotiates with, with the individual groups based on what we call, you know, white space, meaning areas on the tee sheet where we don't fill. So, in other words, like on Tuesday morning, we have a big group, but even with that group, we still, throughout the entire year, always have space on Tuesday mornings. So, we virtually know, if you turn that group away, say you turn away those fifty players, since you already have excess inventory, you know that you've just lost all that money, because you didn't even fill, you didn't fill your space. So, that's our concern, when you start to talk about group pricing and standardizing it, that you're either going to diminish the value of, so one of the ways you could look at group pricing is you could say, well, we could take every resident and drop the resident rate to a certain group rate. Well, then, that functionally is devaluing a membership, because if it's less for a resident to play here singularly by themselves at any time, then it becomes a better deal to not become a member. So, it, it's all tied in together when you look at those different concepts. So, I would just leave the, are there any questions of Andy, or myself, or David, relative to the dynamic, dynamic pricing that we use with our groups?
I think there will be. Is there?
Yeah. Don't all jump in at once.
I just wanted to ask, I know on Tuesday, Andy, you have this amazing group in the evening. I think you had to cut it back to a hundred, couldn't you, because there's many people wanting to play?
Sure, yeah, we, the Tuesday night golf league, we have right at a hundred players that participate in that.
And let me ask you one question that goes along with that. When is the driving range, one night it's closed for whatever, repair, or...
Sure, we, when the grass is growing on the driving range, and we have to start cutting it, we use, we close it at 5:30 on Tuesday evenings.
There's the problem. With the guys that can play with your hundred people in their group, that, that's great. I don't know, I'm all favorite, because they have a blast, and you can always go up to Bar to buy you drinks, but with the guys that can't play, us, I go to practice range and just close that evening. Is there, can we switch it?
Sure.
Tuesday to a Wednesday, or something like that?
That's a good, that's a good comment.
Sure, we, uh, when the grass is growing on the driving range and we have to start cutting it, we use, uh, we close it at five-thirty on Tuesday evenings.
There's the problem. With the guys that can, then play with your hundred people in their group, uh, that, that's great. I don't know, I'm, I'll pay for it, 'cause they have a blast, and, uh, you can always walk into Barter by your drink, but with guys that can't play, us, I go to practice range and just close that evening. Is there, can we switch it?
Sure.
Tuesday to a Wednesday, or something like that?
That's a good, that's a good comment.
Because it's a good practice time.
We can definitely, uh, hadn't thought of that.
Yeah.
That's a good, good suggestion.
And the other thing there is, uh, the-
Especially when we only have the one golf course.
Yeah, I talked to Jim about this one other time, and he, and he made the change. The water sprinklers were coming on before, when the time changed, they were coming on while you're after practice in the evenings, and Jim hadn't moved it up there. I think we need to move one more move after, like, eight o'clock or nine o'clock, because I was out there the other day, and he, he just, it comes on, and you still got about forty-five minutes to daylight to practice, and here comes the sprinklers. So, you did that once, and maybe we can just do it again.
Sure.
That's all I gotta say.
Andy, since you, uh, are overbooked on that Tuesday night thing, have you raised the price of that?
We have, yeah, and I wouldn't say we're, we're overbooked, you know, we've got room for a hundred and forty-four players. But the problem is, the later we go in the season, the less daylight we get, and we wouldn't be able to finish. So, um, you know, to kinda keep it manageable and get the people around in a timely manner, uh, we do limit it to, let's say, a hundred, a hundred and four players each year.
Would you agree?
Yeah. Thanks for the explanation, David, on the dynamic pricing. Um, I guess it's pretty cyclical, too. It pertains to different markets, i.e., golf is one of them, restaurants is another one. People are always trying to support that supply and demand. You know, vacation spots, some people, vacation spots in the summer down here, you can get real cheap housing. In the winter, you can't, okay? So, you know, you have to adjust those prices. I, when we look at groups, I think the groups are guaranteed revenue coming in, but that doesn't mean that if we have a group on Tuesday, if it rains, we're gonna get that revenue. It's, it's, it'll go, you know? Some people will play, some won't. Members won't necessarily play because they say, hey, I can play tomorrow. My question, I guess, would be, we have groups, and I don't know what they even pay, first of all. I have ideas. I don't know if there's a, if they say, they, they commit to, let's say, forty players on a given day, what happens if they show up with twenty-five players? Okay? We're gonna end up with white space there, as, as you describe it, because we, we expected forty or more, but we only get twenty-five, so we lose, we, we block that out, so we lose that revenue, because people calling in, we say, we don't have it available, that time's gone. So, I'm not, and, and I might be wrong, I'm not sure exactly how that works, and maybe, you know, Andy can shed some light, but... So, my next question would be, we have groups, we have a guaranteed revenue in, we say we're filling in these white spaces, the supply and demand, but do we, have we ever experimented, and I brought this up at the last meeting, have we ever experimented and said, and, and I'm using, I'm just throwing numbers out here as an example, if we charge a group thirty-six dollars a person, as a hypothetical, and we get forty people, we can calculate what the revenue will be, but we might be able to fill thirty-five of those spots at a higher rate, but because we don't have those spots available, we've actually blocked out people. So, I'm just wondering, have we ever experimented with not having these large groups and try to fill the space in the, the high season, in the winter? I'm not talking in the summer, and everybody's gotta compete in the summer. I mean, I can play courses at a hundred and twenty-five dollars now, and I can go on for forty dollars and thirty-five dollars. I mean, so, that, that, that doesn't apply to the summer. But the winter, when we, we're, we're jam-packed here. Now, if, if, if you're telling me, Andy, that we don't fill in on Tuesdays, you know, I have to go by what you're saying, and, and, you know, with that.
Sure, so, you know, we kinda treat our outside groups the way we do our member groups, so we'll, we'll, with our member groups, we call ahead three days in advance and, you know, and get their numbers. We expect the group leader to have their numbers three days ahead. That would allow us to sell to, um, you know, public play or provide space for other members to participate. So, you know, we keep a close eye on that, um, you know, as far as making sure that the group stays right around the number that they're requesting. So, um, yes, um, have we experimented before? Um, I, I can't say that we, that we have. I do know it would be a risk. You know, we look at Tanglewood, they probably bring in seventy-five thousand a year, you know, for the golf side, and they're playing in the non-peak times, so if we experiment and lose that seventy-five thousand, where, you know, where else are we gonna get that money from? So, it, it would be a risk to do that. Um, and in my experience, those eight o'clock shotguns aren't gonna fill up, they're not full with the groups that we have, so, uh, and to answer your other question, if, if you're not gonna, if I'm a group, and you're not gonna let me play in the peak season, I'm not gonna bring you my business in the non-peak season. That's, that's where I would stand. Now, I can't speak for all my groups here, but if you tell me I can't play January, February, March, when I've got all my numbers, I'm not gonna support you the rest of the year.
So, what's the size of the group that we have from Tanglewood currently on Tuesdays? How many players?
Tuesday morning in-season is roughly-
No, in the summer?
Right now, there's twenty.
Right now.
I think there's twenty.
Right.
Yeah.
Anywhere, probably from two groups to four, five, six groups.
Okay.
During the summertime, so it's, I mean, it's a severe drop-off. Well, once we hit May through, you know, May through September, it, it's very similar to what we have with our membership, you know, as far as the drop-off.
It kinda goes right back, though, to, I, I suspect the reason it drops off is the same as people go back, they're snowbirds, they go back.
Sure.
It's not because we didn't provide them the ability to play. In other words, you were saying that, well, if you don't give it to them in the peak season, they're not going to come in the off-peak season, i.e. the summertime. Well, but they're not here anyway, so I don't think we're gonna lose those people.
Right, sure, so, you know, the majority of the money that we make out of that seventy-five grand is gonna be in-season, you know, November through March, so if you tell them they can't play during that time, you can just plan on losing the majority of that revenue, for sure.
Now, how do we, how do we determine if somebody is, when you talk about these groups, is it, anybody can be part of the group?
The, the only thing I was gonna clarify before Andy answers that is that the seasons that I think Andy's referring to are the shoulder seasons. So, you've got a real solid ten-week period, in my mind, you know, being new to the market, that starts about January fifteenth and ends about March thirtieth. Um, and, and that's one level of demand. And then we basically have the late October through January fifteenth demand, and then the April demand. And, and the groups are gonna be, schedule and be, they're, they're bigger than just the, that seventy-five day demand. They're more of like a five or six-month demand, so that's where you lose their patronage. Yeah, in the summer, and right now, basically, the group discounting is almost nil. Um, you know, the prices are low, just, just to come here as a, if you wanna be a loyalty card member, which is kind of another way of group pricing, you know, that they buy a loyalty card, that's the way the industry is. The more, the more you play, basically, and the more you bring to a course, the more you can negotiate your rate. Um, but I'll let you answer Mark's question.
And what was your question again, Mark? I, I got stuck listening here to Jim.
The, the point I was just trying to say is-
What, what constitutes me being part of a group to get that group rate?
Oh, sure, so, I don't have a list, you know, groups, groups don't provide me with a list of who, um, who is a part of that group. However, whatever's on your list, they're only playing at that time, so we'll, we'll take Tanglewood, for instance. If they wanna play at any other time outside of when we have them scheduled, they're paying the resident rate. So, you only get the discounted rate at that time and when you're with that group. Even if you're, even if someone from Tanglewood calls me and says, well, I wanna play on Tuesday morning at eight, and they're not on that list, I'm still charging them the resident rate. I mean, you, you have to be attached to that group. Now, do I, um, I don't have a list of, you know, of, of whether or not those residents, now, I, I talk with the Tanglewood folks, and they understand that we want them to be Tanglewood residents, or, you know, a house guest of, of a Tanglewood resident will accept as well, so, um, you know, I leave it on those groups to abide by that. We're not flooded with, if they were getting outside people in, I would imagine they'd be wanting more space than, than they actually get in, in the, in the season. So, um, to answer your question, no, we don't, we don't keep tabs on that. I go by what they, they provide me with the list each week.
So, anybody can be part of the group, is essentially what you're saying? You don't have to be a Tanglewood resident?
Correct, yes.
I just wanna understand, because, you know, I, I just need a clear understanding of what constitutes a group.
Correct.
So, we also have now established groups from Highlands Ridge. Is that inaccurate or accurate?
I don't have a Highlands Ridge, um, I don't have a Highlands Ridge group. We have groups that come over from Highlands Ridge, uh, but there's nothing, um- Okay.
I'm talking to one sheet.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking Highlands Ridge members. So, we, we have a group, uh, that came here Wednesday morning, and I guess for years they've been playing out at Highlands Ridge for, uh, Wednesday mornings. So, Wednesday morning, the only thing we got going in town is the WGA. There's absolutely, in-season, I mean, we, there, there's no other members that play, um, there's not much public demand, so that group right there's been a goldmine for us. It's at the tune of, you know, twelve to fifteen thousand, and then they would come, come in and eat afterwards. So, that group, uh, came over from Highlands Ridge, um, because, for whatever reason, I don't know what happened over there at Highlands Ridge, but they came on over here, um, and are planning to come back next year, so, and that's a group, this is just ideal for the club, 'cause it's money that we didn't have before, that now, as long as we maintain our service level and keep them happy, they're gonna keep coming. Ladies still play in four hours, fifteen minutes, Wednesday morning, these guys are moving, so that, that, that's where we really want all of our groups to be, you know? If you play in the morning, in your group, and you're playing at eight o'clock, you're gonna get a better deal than if you ask me for, you know, ten-thirty, eleven o'clock tee times. I mean, that, you know, for me to, to give up ten-thirty, eleven o'clock tee times, when I've got members that wanna play, and then I've got also outside demand that's gonna go ahead and pay fifty-six bucks or join our advantage card, it, that would be the issue I would have with standardizing certain rates, is, you know, it eliminates my negotiating power, and then we'd have to have a ton of them, because, you know, if you wanna play at noon, that's gonna be a whole lot higher than if you wanted to play at eight-thirty or seven-thirty in the morning, where the demand is less. So, the higher the demand, the higher you're gonna pay, or you're gonna go somewhere else. The lower the demand, the more room they have to negotiate with me, because my job is to create revenue for the club, you know, all the while keeping the membership happy and the pace of play moving. So, those, those are all factors that, that I look at when I'm making those negotiations.
And it's, it's, it's definitely a difficult balancing act that you have to work with, and, and you're right. You're trying to bring the best revenue in for, for the course, and, and I certainly appreciate that.
Sure.
And with it, Jim mentioned something about eroding memberships, okay, by pricing, because then maybe people would say, gee, why would I get a membership when I can play? You know, if they say, well, I play three days a week, or two days a week, and they, they run the numbers, and they say, wow, why don't I get into one of these group-type programs? And I think that's at least where Jim was going, and said, you know, that will erode our membership. Therefore, we keep our membership rates high, which is a guaranteed revenue that you can count on every year, even though the memberships might be declining, because it's common in the industry. But then you have spouses that play once or twice a week that aren't on a family membership, and they're paying more than somebody that comes in from the outside. That's where, that's where it gets a little bit dicey. It's like, if you're going to offer somebody from the outside a rate, a resident sometimes is saying, why am I paying ten dollars more for that same time slot? They, can't they just get into that group and then pay the, the lower rate?
If, I, if, if the group allowed them to get into the group, I, I mean, I, I guess they could, you know? The, the other thing, the fact that the lowest rate that we have is the member-guest discount card. You know, so, if I had a spouse that only plays a little bit, you know, a little bit at, at a time, well, I'm gonna have her use that member-guest discount card to get the best, you know, to get the best rate that we have, but, um, you know, if, if we start giving every resident, every member-guest the same rate that we would a group because they're playing at eight o'clock shotgun, that loss of revenue is gonna be significant. Um, and I think you're gonna have more, you're gonna, it's gonna impact the membership, too.
Mm-hmm.
Not because you're, you're not going to get a membership because you can play cheaper. I, and I, and I think, and I could be wrong, but I would imagine most of our members do the math, and that's why they do join, or don't join. Is because if they play enough, they're gonna get a membership. If they don't play enough, then they're gonna pay the forty-two-dollar resident rate in-season and, you know, the twenty-four-dollar rate out of season. So, it, in my opinion, you have to, you have to have the groups, um, for us to, to meet our goals. If we don't have, if we don't have the groups, we're gonna lose a lot of revenue. Now, we can experiment.
I'm not suggesting you lose revenue. That would be, uh, uh, not at all.
Right, sure.
I'm just saying, looking at it from outside the box a little and say, you know, you've got a guaranteed revenue right now. That's, that's a real plus.
Sure.
But at the same time, you could increase that revenue if you wanted to kinda just take a little bit of a risk, you could increase that revenue quite a bit. Now, I don't know, maybe you can share with me, I hope you can share with me, what is the rate that we're paying in the, in the high season, or, what's a group rate in the high season?
We, we-
Not in the, the summer, but in the high season.
So, in, in the, in season, our, our group rates range anywhere from probably thirty dollars upwards of forty dollars. So, anywhere in between that is where all of our groups are gonna lie.
So, that fluctuates seasonally? I mean, from January to-
Sure, oh, yes, sir.
So, so, let's say I'm from January, I hate to have to do this, I mean, I'm trying to find out an answer. If I play somewhere from January to March-
Okay.
What am I paying for a group rate? Are you saying somewhere between thirty and forty dollars?
Well, it's a, it's a loaded question, because it depends on what time you're gonna play, how many players you're gonna bring me, how often are you gonna play? There's not a, I can't just say thirty-five dollars, okay, 'cause-
So, let me, you know what you have from Tanglewood?
Sure.
That's been a group that's played for years now here.
Yeah, so, Tanglewood in-season is thirty bucks, that's what we charge for the dish.
They pay thirty dollars in-season, okay?
Correct.
How about Highlands Ridge? Where do they pay in-season?
On Wednesday morning, they-
Yeah, we don't-
We're defeating our purpose here.
Well, first of all, everything-
Dynamic pricing model, it's either a dynamic pricing model where we work off the industry and we maximize our revenue, or we publicize our rates and we're gonna make less money. At least, that's what the experts are telling us, based on what works at other courses. And so, what it comes down to is, I wish there was a way that we could give members the rates for their non-member spouses or guests that wouldn't detract from our revenue scheme, but there isn't a way that we can figure out.
Jim, all I'm asking is, I wanna run the numbers myself. If it makes it more beneficial for me not to join and spend five thousand, then that might be a decision I'm going to make. Will I get the benefit of a group rate? That's all I'm asking.
Well, my point is-
My question is, does the majority of the board want us to discuss these rates, or is this just a question from Mr. Camp, if we're gonna get into each individual rate?
My, my thought here is, everything you say here is public record, and if you start discussing individual rates, you're gonna create a bidding war. If you wanna know something personally, I think you should sit down with Andy individually and do that, but to discuss individual group rates is not to our advantage at this point, in my opinion.
Okay, fine, I'll withdraw the questions.
I just have a, a couple of comments.
Sure.
Do we have a, a rate for forty players, or sixty, or twenty?
No, sir.
Okay. Why don't we do it that way? And make it all the same? I mean, my question is, you solely are in charge of deciding who pays what and how many? That's, that's basically what you're, okay.
Sure.
Wouldn't it be beneficial?
And, and Jim.
Okay, wouldn't that be beneficial for us to have a twenty-player rate, a forty-player rate? I, I don't like the idea of-
No, no.
'Cause I know Andy Kessling, I can get a better rate.
Well, it'd be like, you know, if I go buy a car, and I've got no negotiating power, I don't feel special at all. You know, if, if I go buy a car, and you may have sold it to the guy for thirteen grand, you know, but- know, but he may sell it to me for 14 grand, and I feel fantastic, because maybe we started a higher number, and I moved down. So, if you, if you don't give me the negotiating power, I, I don't think that we're, I don't think we're going to maximize our revenue.
Okay, that's, that's an answer, and I might not have to agree with it, but.
No, but I, I understand what you're asking. I, I just think we'd have a million of them. You know, it would, it would range from, if you want 11:30 with 20, you know, 11:30 with 25, 11:30 with 40 players, where we'd go on and on and on.
Okay. And I do know that non-residents are playing in Tanglewood group. I mean, I know they're, because I know some of them.
Why not?
And I ask them why they're doing it, and they say, because it's cheaper. And that's, that's all I have.
Sure.
David, it's okay, it's okay for a supervisor to come in and talk to Andy, and for Andy to disclose the rates to them?
Individually, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
And I have no, I got no problem doing that either one. End of discussion. I'm just trying to get some transparency here. You know, people have to dig, and dig, and dig to find out things that go on in this district, be it golf operations or other things. Okay? Now, if the rest of the board doesn't share that opinion with me, that's fine. I appreciate your opinion.
Sure.
Thank you, David, Nandi. At this point, we have Trevor Brinkmeyer from Rainbird, and Mike Stevens, our regional agronomists, that are going to do a presentation on our irrigation system.
Jim, are we going to revisit the rate sheets that you provided to the board after the presentation? Okay.
Start, first of all, my name is Mike Stevens, I'm with Billy Casper Golf, I am the regional director of agronomy for the southeast. Thanks for having us this morning. To my right is Trevor Brinkmeyer, as Jim introduced, he is the Rainbird Irrigation Specialist for the southeast. Trevor lives down in Naples, and has been kind enough to join us here this morning. I know, last board meeting, there was some discussion on some potential capital investment back into the irrigation system to address some immediate concerns with the operations. Raymond Perez, our new superintendent here, has done a good job managing through some of those challenges, as did our previous superintendent. And we feel like we've reached a point to where we need to address some of those, some of those issues that are out there. My goal today is to take a little bit deeper dive into those discussions that were brought up last board meeting, in the understanding that, you know, the golf course is somewhat of an epicenter of the district of Sonora Lake. It's a, it's a main drawing force, and obviously a point of interest for many people. And we feel that it's our responsibility to lead conversations regarding capital investments to the golf course, to make sure that the asset is taken care of, not just for our immediate concerns today, to get through the operations that we need to, but also to make sure it's in a sustainable foundation for many years to come. So, our goal today is not to give direction on where to spend money, it's to provide information to the board, and to our team, to make sure that we all have the information necessary to make those decisions leading forward. Ultimately, at the end of the day, once all that information is on the table, and we all have a very clear understanding of what the issues are today, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, that, at that point, we can get some direction from the board, as to which direction we want to go. So with that said, I want to give a very brief description as to the current status of the irrigation system as it exists today, how it operates. That, I think, will lead into a bigger discussion about the direction we want to go moving forward. You all have in front of you a brief packet that we sent out yesterday for you to review last night. There's a few options in there about potential capital investments into this, into the irrigation system. More importantly, there's a brief synopsis that was put together, thankfully, with the help here of Trevor, about the current situation of the irrigation system, understanding that there are really two separate irrigation systems that we're discussing, one for Deer Run, and one for Turtle. Ultimately, one is about twice as old as the other, when you start looking at the life expectancy. The irrigation systems, as they are designed and installed, essentially upgraded, we'll say that, about 20-plus years ago, when Turtle was rebuilt, was built, Deer Run was upgraded from its satellite control system at the same time that Turtle was. Those satellite control systems have a hydraulic operating system in them, which basically means that the, there is water sent from the irrigation control panel out into the individual irrigation heads on the golf course, which turns them on and off. Now, those hydraulic actuators are dictated and managed by the electronic components that tell them what to turn on and off, but ultimately, it's the hydraulics that operate the irrigation system in the field. Those hydraulic systems, at the time that they were installed, were state-of-the-art, were the right decisions to put in, mainly because, at that time, lightning protection technology wasn't to the point where it could sustain mother nature. Instead of living where we do in Florida, lightning strikes are a huge concern, and can cause major damage to irrigation and components. Hydraulics don't have as much risk, obviously. Today, where we sit, in a, in a technology standpoint, there is much more advanced technology to resist and deal with lightning strikes, so the majority of irrigation systems being designed and put in today move forward with electronic-based systems. So instead of hydraulics that run your field, there are electronics that turn them on and off, at the point of the irrigation head itself. The challenge we have today is that the hydraulics that exist in the control modules in the field, in the control satellite stations, are aged, the hydraulic tubing gets brittle, it decomposes, it falls apart. Many of the components that are in the boxes today are to the age where you cannot even purchase replacement parts. We're having challenging times finding those parts, many times they're aftermarket, they're pulled off of older systems that have been redone, so we're getting used components to replace broken components, which, the life expectancy there, obviously, is based on how those components were maintained to begin with, or the age of them. So, the conversations that took place last board meeting were basically to resolve and update the hydraulic modules that exist in the irrigation boxes today. That gets us back to a point where we can effectively and consciously turn on the irrigation system at night, and expect it to run when it's supposed to run, and it'll turn off when it's supposed to turn off. That's about as far as it gets us. That number that's discussed last board meeting, just to clarify, was for component costs only, it did not include labor components. So, on top of the number you had, which was around 150 or so, I believe, there's an additional, you want to call it 40 to $60,000, an additional cost to get to that point. So we're talking about a quarter million dollar investment. And that's okay, that's good. But, that doesn't solve a long-term issue, which is updating the rest of the hydraulic components that exist in the field underground throughout the rest of your golf course that are decaying, falling apart, and will eventually need to be replaced. As noted in the overview for the, from, that you, in the front page of your packet there, the typical life expectancy of an irrigation system is right around that 20 to 25-year mark. The piping itself, that actually transfers the water throughout the golf course, that typically goes a little bit longer, if it's installed correctly and managed, maintained correctly, meaning, the irrigation system is running in a very efficient manner that moves water without causing too much hammer, and hammer being pressure swings back and forth, on and off. That's, I feel pretty confident that's maintained out here over the years. So while the piping on Turtle is around 20-plus years, the piping in the ground on Deer Run is right around 40-plus years, which has far exceeded its life expectancy from a normal PVC pipe installation of a golf course in Florida. So, what we want to do is talk about a phased-out approach that needs to be looked upon to do eventually a full renovation of the golf course. I'm not proposing it needs to be done today. What you have in front of you is a functional golf course with functional irrigation that just needs to be tweaked. But the question exists, if we're going to spend money, where do we spend it? How do we get the biggest bang for your buck? And, do we want to spend money and have to go back and replace those components in five years from now? Or do we want to put components in the ground that, as you continue to progress and modify and upgrade your irrigation system, you don't have to change those components back out, you can just reuse them in, as part of your new project? I expect that there's a lot of questions from the board.
I just have, I just have one quick question, is, what's your recommendation?
Okay, so, if I own a golf course, and I'm looking at a cost of doing business, I always refer back to the food and beverage costs at the side of things, just because I like food, and it's easy to comprehend. If I'm selling a hamburger, I got to buy the bun to make a hamburger to sell. Correct? It's just part of doing business. If I'm managing and owning and selling a golf course, I have to have an irrigation system that's functional, so I can produce a product that's marketable to sell, not just to its membership, but to attract the members, and to the outing public that's surrounding the competition of this market. So, the biggest number here to completely redo an irrigation system that will give you, we'll call it 20 to 40 additional years, without having to reinvest back into it, is about a million dollars for 18 holes. It's a big number. But ultimately, when it's spread out over the life expectancy of the irrigation system, it can be broken down into a manageable amount, especially with the opportunity to move into a, what do you call it, a leasing option, but a financing option. And I know that's not something typically done in this environment, but when you're looking at a huge number, and looking at the cash flow situation, and understanding of expenditures on the property, potentially, it makes sense to take on those percentage rates, municipalities get very good rates, obviously, and just include those annual funds to bring in a new operating system as part of operating fund. When you start looking at a $2 million renovation, which potentially is, could be out here, you can work and include labor cost in that, and finance that over a 10 to 15-year period at a rate of around 3.5% to 4%. Which gets you around a nine, to do the math correctly, $9,300 a month lease payment, or financial payment, to put in a brand-new irrigation system. What that does is alleviate a lot of your operating expenses. Typically, in the past five years, or looking back at the financials for Sonora Lake, we're spending as little as $21,000 annually in irrigation repairs, as much as $40,000. And that covers Deer and Turtle. In similar situations where we've installed new irrigation systems, including the piping, which we'll talk a little bit about here in a minute, we've seen the annual irrigation R&amp;M go from that $20,000 to $30,000 range, to the first five or six years of operations, down to about $3,000 a year in R&amp;M. 10 years into it, usually creeps up to around $8,000 a year. So there's incremental savings involved in that. Is it, is it a true return on investment? No. But it is a savings, one from a labor standpoint, but, I mean, from a equipment standpoint. But also, when you start looking at revamping irrigation systems, you're going to address inefficiencies in the design, to where, right now, we're having to overwater perhaps more than we'd like to, just to get enough water in one area while oversaturating another because of the design of the irrigation system. So we're spending more electricity to run those pumps, we're spending more on water costs to get the water from point A to point B, and through the aquifer as well, and for reclaim in some cases. So there's incremental savings there as well. I haven't done those numbers. Typically, there's about a 20% efficiency savings there on water usage and electricity usage, so we can go back and look at the utility bill and see what those savings would be as well. On top of that, Raymond and his team is spending a considerable amount of time maintaining and operating the irrigation system. So there's a labor number involved there as well. So, not just from a financial spent, a time spent, but from an allocation of where he's spending his time, understanding that the conditions of the golf course are, you know, paramount to the success of the overall facility, that time spent can be reallocated to more detail, more oversight of the teams, and ensure more efficient operations from the main staff overall, and just an overall improvement in the conditions of the golf course. So, while the, the price tag has a certain value to it, the, the side effect of an upgraded irrigation system has much more of an impact than just, well, we don't have to fix it near as much. It's an improvement in product, and an investment into your property, which, at the end of the day, helps hold home values, not just to the golfing public, but to the rest of the residents of the district as well. And I'm not too sure there's a price you can put on that. We all understand the, the value there, and the importance of our own home values, in drawing not just the existing membership, but new homeowners as well.
I have a few questions.
Please.
What's the age of the system on Deer?
The age of the system on Deer, I believe, is 42 years.
Okay, what's the age on the system with Turtle?
24, I believe.
And we're proposing to, would Turtle have a lifespan of 18 more years, like Deer does?
The piping in the ground, we could expect to get a life expectancy of about 18 more years, yes. The operating system of the controllers in the field, that turn the irrigation system on and off, no, it's exceeded its life expectancy and needs to be addressed.
Did we have to replace those on Deer?
At the, I believe at the time they did the renovation of Turtle, or the, the design and build of Turtle, Deer was upgraded at that point. So you're essentially looking at the same controlling system on Deer as you are on Turtle, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to know that, I mean, I'm looking at.
I will say, for the extent of this conversation, yes, the controller systems on both golf courses are all at the same age.
Yeah. I, I'm looking at this system, look at this pragmatic, and I have no idea what these first four pages are, but I'm down there. Second, I'm looking at this, and on the last page in the report.
Yes, sir.
There's some prices in there, it says 2017 price, and 5% index, and so forth like that. I don't come out with a million dollars a golf course. What's, what is that last page?
So the million dollar a golf course is a, that would be a complete irrigation redesign and install, which would include new piping.
Right.
New operating system, labor install. That is not included in the packet we handed out to you.
What's this?
So in the packet we handed out to you, there is the installation of a new operating system in the field, as well as new hardware components, irrigation heads, swing joints, et cetera, without the addition of new piping. So, the addition to the numbers you're looking at would be the installation of piping as well.
Raymond, have you looked at the, had a chance to look at the piping in the aspect? Is there things you want wrong with it, on Deer or Turtle, the piping?
As far as the piping, since I've been here, we have not done a repair on the piping itself.
Okay. Could we find out if the system was upgraded on Deer 24 years ago, when we did Turtle?
Absolutely. We'll have that answer to you about this afternoon.
With doing that, I mean, I'm trying to get this to a reasonable amount to say, hey, here's what we need to do. I don't think there's any way, but this, this, I don't think there's any way we can do a million dollars a course. But, I think that if we were up, find out the status of what Turtle and Deer are, I mean, theoretically, I walk out there and I see water flow. What else do I want? You told the other day when we went around, though, that there's some heads in the wrong place, and stuff like that. That's, that's your business. You know, move where you want to. You want to make everything green, that's your business. But that, that doesn't commit to millions, to do that, I'm sure. Here, if it does, I'm going to keep my own business here. What I'm trying to just say is, that I'd like to know what the actual status is of the system on Deer and Turtle, and the status of the equipment when it was updated, if we need to update Deer again, or update Turtle, you say it's going to be for 18 more years. You see, I don't know what these answers are, as I'm looking at the system. I'm not looking at one head, or one station, or whatever, I'm looking at just the system, and where we stand. I mean, I'd have to have, I don't know about you guys, but I'd have to have that before I would say, okay, I know how important water is out there. I mean, we've found that out the last three months, how important water is out there. And that's going to happen every year, isn't it? Part of the investment, every year. And, and I know water's what brought it back, but I just need to know more, Mike and Trevor, I just, myself, I just need to know, get more information as to the status of the equipment as it is. If you were to come back and tell me that Deer is shot, we can't guarantee you two more years, or yet Deer just needs upgraded one more time for $190,000, things like that, I just need to know what it is.
Is that an assessment we can do in-house, or do we need to?
No, there are, there are service providers that will come out and do a professional, if you want to call it a system diagnosis.
Analysis, yeah.
Yeah. The, the challenge that we always run into is, is the piping estimate. So the challenge, come in and say, okay, your piping is going to last another five years, it's going to last another 10 years. No matter who we bring in here, they're going to have a hard time giving you that idea. It's just based off of industry assessments and, and historicals. And, a lot of the times, it's based off, well, how many, how many repairs do you have?
Yeah, well, that's what he's saying. He had got into that, he's got into some head movement.
Yeah. Yeah. Which is part of the irrigation redesign. But, so, I will say this though. So, from a, from an operating component system standpoint, that's really the main, that's how this discussion hall started. It wasn't so much about the pipes and repairs, it was more about the field satellites, their inability to consistently run, constant malfunction, having to replace components. I think we just replaced 2,000 feet of supply wire over on deer recently too. So, I mean, there's, there's a number of those components that they have failed, are failing, and have outdone their life expectancy. And so, that's, the basis of this conversation is to bring to, bring to light that, yes, we are at that point. Not just on deer, but on deer and turtle as well, and the operating system. So, our discussion would be, okay, if we're going to, if we're going to have to address this, we could spend that $150,000, $200,000 and fix those field satellites. Our concern is that if in five years, we get to a point where all the tubing in the ground that feeds irrigation heads have decomposed to the point where all of a sudden we're having to run new tubes, the coverage and everything else has failed as well, we're going to have to upgrade to an electrical system because hydraulic systems are just to the point where they're just ineffective and they're just not the technology used today because there's better options. So, if we're going to upgrade to that point in a very short amount of time, does it better, does it make sense to reinvest into a different wiring type of the system, which once installed, the wiring systems use about 10% of other options in the field? So, if we go through and have to do a major piping renovation on either golf course, that technology, all you have to do is replace a few, you know, a few thousand feet of wire versus hundreds, hundreds of thousands of feet. And all of a sudden, you're back in business with a minimal downtime and minimal overhead expense if we do everything. So, is it better to spend $200,000 now on a potential short-term fix, or is it better to spend, you know, $400,000-ish or per, per course to upgrade the entire operating components, irrigation heads for better coverage, the wiring system, no satellite for the field? And Trevor can talk more about that. But again, we just, we want to present options to you so you can decide how they better spend that money. Certainly don't come to you today and expect you to say, you know what, the best decision is to spend $2 million on the golf course, go do it. And that's why I said, our, our goal here today is to lead discussions, bring information to you. You're going to have to spend that $2 million within the next 10 years. It's going to happen. The system is at that age where we're either going to spend it in repairs and upgrades, or you're going to spend it earlier and more potentially wiser and spread it out over a longer period of time to absorb into the operations without having to hit, take that hit all at once.
Yeah. But if we don't do anything, we say, we're, we don't have the money right now. Let's just get, set a scenario here. We don't have the money right now. And we're just going to pray that we fix things that go along for two years, three years before we actually have to replace it. Our backs against the wall. Because I'm looking at two systems here that are 18 years different and that seem to be working the same. And I'm thinking, what about turtle? You know, it's, it, something must have been going forward over there. It's going 24 years and deer was at 42 years. And you don't have the ground shifting here to establish breaks in those pipes that could maybe up north. You know, I know we put one end of the golf course in West Virginia in 1992, and you're talking about ground freezes and dust freezes and those pipes move. Get down here, I don't think you get that. So, that may be why we're getting more years. But I would rather have some more information than I'm saying. I really would.
Ray, do you have something?
If I'm gathering this right, what you're saying here in the, the new electronic system and what we have now in the hydraulic system, in other words, the, all the, all the stuff that, all the controllers are going to be completely different. So, if we would change any, any of the stuff and go to the, for our hydraulic system that we have now, it would be a waste five years from now when we have to do something else. Is that correct?
That would be, that would be our-
Okay. And did I understand that to switch the heads and switch the, the controllers on both courses, it would run about $400,000?
Per course.
Per course. Okay.
That's an investment, just to clarify, that's an investment that would stay in place.
Right.
It would not change-
Still, still going to have to eventually put the, put the piping.
Correct. That's, that's a modification to the system that would be in the ground, stay for the future of the, of the asset.
Can any, can this be done nine holes at a time?
Absolutely. The, the benefit of move, of transferring to a new electric system, especially the ones we're talking about here being a two-wire, in Raymond's case, called IC system, you can isolate holes and move forward nine holes at a time. You can do it hole by hole and not have to shut down play. So, there's no loss of revenue there as well. Of course, we have the benefit here of shutting down periodically throughout the summer. So, that's, that's, you know, a better benefit. And certainly Trevor can speak to that as well. So, nine holes is an option at a time, a phased, phased program is an option. Obviously, just like with any project, the, the longer you stretch it out, the more costs are incurred to do it. So, the numbers you're looking at here are a 18-hole at a time or 36-hole at a time renovation cost, not a nine-hole at a time. So, the pricing would elevate slightly. I don't have those numbers, but we can get those.
One more question. Since we're running, our budget is more than full, as you can see.
Yes, sir.
How big a chance are we taking to postpone this a year, even up to two years? In your estimation?
Raymond, maybe you can speak to the time you're spending and challenges you're having getting irrigation on our golf course?
We roughly, we probably roughly spend around 15 hours a week dealing with the irrigation To me, the piping, you know, is, is something that we're not going to be able down the line to avoid. But we, we've forgotten here, we looked at a big number and we, and it's kind of scared us. Our operating system is obsolete.
I understand that.
That was going to-
All I'm trying to do is get by without borrowing $800,000.
Well, I mean, for the operating system, it's not exactly $800,000 though. I mean, that's the whole kit and caboodle that we're not going to be able to avoid, be able to avoid somewhere down the line.
Right.
There are some immediate fixes that could probably buy us some time, if that's, if that's what you're asking. And there's no way to predict.
I understand that.
I was just asking for your, for your opinion here.
Kurt?
Is this $900,000 quote here, is this for the hydraulic system? Is that what that is?
The-
Because it says it's for both courses and it says labor is included, rebates are included. So, I, I guess I'm confused where and how $2 million is coming from. Page one of five here.
So, if you, if you refer to the first page, it has the comparison. And that's really the, the simplest breakdown to refer to.
Well-
Because there's a breakdown of a simple controller upgrade, and then there's a breakdown of-
Check the bet.
It was in the email that Tanya emailed out last night.
This is what it looks like. It's a one-page summary.
I think it's the very back. Well, answer my question, is it hydraulic or electric? The $900,000?
It'll be electric.
Electric?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, you know, I'm, I'm kind of with Wally, you know, there's a lot of stuff I don't know anything about here, but what happens if you would take, you say deer is 40 years old and turtle is 24, so what happens if you did a complete renovation on turtle, which is a newer course, and then use the parts from that to keep your deer run running until you had enough funds to replace that one? Would that be a possibility?
I understand where you're coming from.
And if you say the piping on turtle is okay, let's just renovate everything but the piping?
So, just to clarify, I absolutely understand where you're coming from. We, we keep that thought process in place with a lot of our equipment, mowers and everything else too. We, you know, far more put the new, to keep streamlining it. From an irrigation system standpoint, the components that are failing on deer are the same components that are failing on turtle. They were upgraded at the same time. They are the actual operating components from the control system itself, not necessarily the irrigation heads or the pipe in the ground. It's the, it's the controlling modules that turn on and off the system. So, there are, all the components that we could take from turtle are the same age as the components that exist on deer when it comes to that standpoint.
But we know the components are still working.
So, the issue here is you don't have, you can't get replacement parts. It's becoming more and more difficult, is that?
Correct.
The controlling system is working, or is that failing as well?
It's obsolete.
Well, I know it's obsolete.
But it's working. I think, I think what we need and the supervisors need and myself, we need an assessment of what we have and what kind of condition levels I think it's in. I think that's, from a decision-making standpoint, I think that would be very informative. Like, I think that's what, Wally, that was what you were saying, excuse me?
Yeah, I mean, you're selecting a $2 million only without it drawing.
Right. I mean, that's, to make a decision, we want to see what kind of condition levels we're at right now. And then we can move forward with some sort of a long-range plan or financial plan to pay for, you know, whatever the board decides. But I think for right now, we want to look and see what, what's actually wrong and where we need to improve.
Understood. And we can absolutely move forward with that. I would like to have Trevor stepping in here just for a second, if you could please.
The central, you asked about is the control system working. There's a, there's a hardware system and there's a software system. The software system is the central computer. That is easily upgraded. It's the hardware that is obsolete at this point. But obviously, if you don't have the hardware, the software doesn't be any good.
I understand.
And I, Ramon, I don't know if you can answer this, but are your controllers on deer versus turtle, are they the same? The same model? So, that would answer your question of how old are the controllers on both golf courses? They would be 24 years old.
Yes.
Because ultimately, what, 20 years prior, you wouldn't have the same model of controller?
No. No, actually, that was an upgrade back in those days from a Veritime 2 to a satellite eight, uh, 8,000 model. It was an, it was an upgrade. You won't find Veritime 2 anymore and for sure, you're not going to find a network 8,000 either.
Okay. I want to go back to this quote thing here, this five pages.
Can I, can I help clarify a thing?
Yeah.
Mike put this together, but this was, all the quotes and everything else, we weren't even thinking about pipe at the time. So, the numbers that you're seeing is based on control system.
So, this is pipeless?
Pipeless, correct.
Okay. And you're saying pipe costs a million dollars for two golf courses?
In, in, in combination with the control systems, numbers you have in front of you, that number would be added up together to be, to total about a million for a golf course. And that's the estimate based off of typical construction and irrigation installs for 18-hole equivalent.
So, you have two other-
So, the other question, you got Toro and Rainbird. What, I mean, basically, the numbers are pretty much the same. So, you're from Rainbird, right?
Yes, sir.
Is there a connection with Toro? I don't understand that.
I think they're just providing a comparison.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Just like we do with any, any purchase of any equipment, you go out and there's, you get as many competitive bids as possible to ensure that the best product and best pricing is put in place for the property.
So, this, this here does not include, include the software or the hardware? Is that what you're saying? Even though it says central on here?
No, no, no. Every, every number you're looking at there does include software, does include hardware as far as the field components. The only thing that is missing and not included in any one of these quotes is the actual pipe for a full renovation and the labor included to install that pipe.
Well, I got a hard time believing a million dollars worth of piping goes in the ground.
Not a million dollars of piping, it's a million-
That what you just said, this includes everything but the piping and it's a million dollars. And now you're at $2 million. My math says a million dollars worth of piping.
Yeah, okay, I see where you're coming from. I think then per course, but yes.
Okay.
Mark, you have a question? No.
So, we're at the point, so if I'm, if I'm hearing the board correctly, we are being asked to go through and acquire services from a professional irrigation audit to come out and diagnose and provide a true understanding of the condition of the existing irrigation system on both courses, not just the operating system, but the pipes as well, and the integrity and the potential life expectancy of it?
I think so, but I, I really, you know the quandary we're in, but I think you three, you three got to do it. But we need to know, because I don't know, these guys know a heck of a lot more than I do, and they don't know anything, I don't think. But we, we got to get it, we got to get them fixed eventually. And whether it's, we do it in two years or three years, I don't think you're going to see anyone's back away from getting it fixed. But it's just right now, the money that we need to do it and how we can do it. And that, I'd like to, Tanya could probably get involved with you three and she could tell us how we can do it. But it's something we just need done, but I look at these figures and I go, and I know you didn't want an answer today, but-
Not at all.
I couldn't give you an answer in six months unless somebody tells me exactly what we need. And you three are the ones that I got to depend on. And you know, you got to treat it like it's yours, because that's what we have that job to do.
Yep. Our, our goal, obviously, our goal obviously is to get irrigation system upgraded and in, in the ground the day before it fails. I mean, that's an ideal situation, right?
Let me ask you something.
And that's a challenge we're all faced with.
Let me ask you something. How much is this assessment?
Is that something?
How much you're costing someone to do that? How much, how much worth of assessment? To give us the assessment, like I had.
Of the system, the current system on the ground? You're paying possibly a few thousand dollars.
Okay. Okay. The reason I'm asking that, to throw it back to you, this has got to go to bid, right?
Yes.
So, we can't go to bid until we get that assessment?
Well, until we know what we want to do. If we want to do it in phases, if we want to do one course, we want to do nine holes.
Yeah. We can't make that decision until they tell us.
So, based on the assessment, I would expect a recommendation from the assessment to come to the board and then we can take a look at it.
And what are the basic components the assessment measures? Does it measure the pipe and the tubing and the operating system, or?
I, I feel it's important if we're going to have an assessment done, to take a full-scale assessment, not just to the actual physical integrity of the system, but to the actual efficiency of the coverage and actual efficiency of the system itself from an irrigation coverage standpoint. Because that's going to tell us, help tell us potential savings of utilities and water usage and all that. Systems were designed 40 years ago, way different than they were today, in a block system versus translation, and efficiencies and coverage is completely different. So, I think it's important to do a physical plus a, a coverage analysis as well.
Yeah, well, I hope you don't mind, but that's, that's what we need and it's really tough for any of us to-
Not at all. Again, our goal here is to get all the information that you need to feel comfortable to reinvest back in your golf course. And if that's the next step we need to take, then we're happy to do it.
Well, we appreciate you coming and we appreciate you, Mike, coming in.
Always.
We get these two all the time.
Yeah.
But we, we really need to depend on you guys. I mean, we really do.
Okay. While I have a second, I never want to miss an opportunity to acknowledge our team, certainly in front of the board and everybody else as well. I want to thank the board and the district for welcoming Raymond as part of this team in the way you have. I know you trusted us to bring you who we thought was a very qualified and important asset to your golf course, and Raymond was that guy on our mind, and you supported that. And based off conversations with each of you, you pretty much said that he's done a great job. And I want to thank you again for having him here and thank Raymond for the job he's doing and supporting Sunland Lake. And we hope to continue to move down that path with you in a positive manner.
True.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
We managed to run everybody else out. It's just us.
We got it down to hardcore.
You're, you're welcome? I don't know.
So, what I'd like to do now is Mike would like to get on the golf course with Ramon.
Yeah.
But I don't know if you have, if you have any questions on any equipment, because I think that's the only part of the budget that Ramon, that it would be good for Ramon to be here. I know we, you know, did look at that Tri-Max demonstration, which, which was impressive. I don't know if we want to talk about that before?
Yeah, I'd like to get his, his recommendation and something like that.
My recommendation?
Careful what you say.
Actually, my, my, I think that, you know, it's a great mower. My recommendation would be to have two of them, if that's the way we want to go, because two, two of those machines only cost the equivalent of one of the self-contained units. And, and if we had two of those and maintaining the self-contained units, we'd gladly avoid some of the rough questions, Wally, that you've been getting. Right. So, my recommendation is, I like the machine, it's half the price of what we originally looked at, but I don't know that one will be suffi, one's not going to do us any justice, if that makes any sense.
Okay, so.
Let me, let me ask a question now. What about taking, getting one of them as quickly as we could, maybe even ahead of the budget, and then put the money back in as the budget goes, and see how it works for the next, right now is when you need it. See how that works for the next couple, three months, couple, yeah, couple, three months, and then, then we can decide, hey, do we want another one like that, or do we want a 14, 16-foot, which I think is the next step up, or, or whatever? Is that, is that a good idea or a bad idea?
Well, it's a good idea. I'm, I'm going to take what you give me.
He just always wanted one.
I'll take that, too. But it is, the only, the only thing I will say about that, though, is that their mower designed specifically for a golf course is the 10 and a half footer.
Right. But the way, the way that gentleman talked, and I haven't seen the other, and you may want to see a demo on, on one bigger, and I understand how the bigger would help in some cases, but there's certain areas you can't use the bigger one. But it would make a couple swipes down all the fairways, because we got room for that, and, like you say, you may want to see a demo on it to see if it does the same kind of job. I don't know if it does or not.
Well, it's, it's supposed to.
It's supposed to, that's right.
Obviously, it's designed the same way.
He said it did.
That's right. So, maybe we, we might need to do that. We may need to have him bring a 16-footer, if, if that's a possibility, just so that we could do.
But I, Ramon, I think when we talked earlier, that you said there wasn't that many areas because of all the pine trees that we planted out there, that it would be efficient for you to kind of really gain some time, that two 10s would have been a lot better.
The pine trees, you are right.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't want to close our mind off, but I definitely think getting one now, one, to help us with the situation we have, and two, to then evaluate the mower, because it was very impressive, but it's, it's really not out in the industry, so that, you know, that's a big concern to me, because I see a lot of things, and I see the next great thing all the time in, in that industry, and a lot of times, it's a few tweaks away, so it would be great to have one of them to help us with, with our immediate situation, and then looking at getting another one, and, and also demoing the 16-footer, because if we could use that, even though we think we can't, you know, if we buy one, I think that would give them some leverage to get it down here. I also talked to Zach, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Mike, but they don't have Billy Casper pricing set up, so I want to try to get, you know, convince them, will be the flagship. You know, if your mower works great, we'll tell everybody at Casper and sell you a lot of mowers, and, you know, in turn for that, why don't you compensate us with a better price or a better deal? So, I think, I think that's a great idea.
And they have no net state, is that right?
Well, they have, would that be, they have financing available?
Net, net state is the state price, and is I understanding?
No, there's not a state, they're, they don't have any special pricing in place, but I think they are willing to listen to Casper, you know, because they, they're in the beginning, the unit's only been out two and a half years, and if it's as good as we think it is, it should be in a lot, lot more places. But it's, it's just hard to break into the industry. A lot of the courses are in, you know, they're in a, in a pattern, you know, where they just rent, you know, they just lease their equipment, or they do things in a pattern, and they go back to the same, same people. And I think this mower has been, this type of mower has been problematic in the past, but the demonstration obviously showed us a lot of the problems that they've had in the past have been fixed.
Ramon, you said it's approximately, what, $30,000 for these?
Uh, 33, I believe.
Okay, 33. And do we have the equipment to pull with the tractors?
Yes.
We do have that, so that's already available.
Yes.
I know talking with John, one of his thoughts, and this is just casual talk, he felt that from a maintenance standpoint, this would be a lot easier and less expensive to maintain, so, but I got to leave this up to you. You, you other guys are out there daily.
Yes, it, it is. There's less moving components, so it's a lot easier to work on, a lot easier to repair.
Any learning curve for your people to run it?
No, we got people that drive tractors now.
Okay.
Before you guys leave, just to understand the information, what are these two guys doing? They are, I should say, companies. You got FIS and GCID. How does that interact?
So, FIS is a distributor for Rainbird products.
Okay.
We don't drive, we don't buy directly from Rainbird, they have distributors that sell their products for them. FIS is a local distributor for their products. The second you mentioned was?
GCID, it's a complete golf construction.
So, they are the labor aspect of that component, they're the ones quoting out how much it would cost to install the products, because the distributors don't install the products themselves, they hire the subcontractors.
So, we'd be buying product from the FIS guys, then, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
We buy it direct?
Yes, from FIS.
Okay. There's any state pricing on this kind of stuff?
I'll double-check, I mean, I think the pricing list is there, probably Billy Casper Golf pricing. I'll double-check, make sure it's a state pricing as well, whichever is most competitive is which we obviously would go with.
If you don't get the right answer, ask me, I'll give you a price.
What's the right answer? Cheap. That's the best answer, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Going back to the full attachment, do we want to try to rent or lease this piece of equipment for a few months, or do we want to, we can bring a resolution back to the board at the next meeting and waive the bid process to buy it, but do we, if you just want to try it, do we want to try to do a short-term lease, or?
I don't believe they have leases of, they don't have leases available, but I will, I'll contact Zach to see what, if that would be available, because it would be, it would be beneficial.
So, to buy it, we would need to bring back a resolution on July 21st?
Yeah, I think, I think we can do that. It sounds to me like Ramon wants to try it, so.
Okay, we'd have to waive the bid process on that particular item, but, I mean, we can certainly do that. No?
Now, we're going to waive the bid process, is it over 25?
Yes.
I don't know if we'll waive it then.
Who else would we bid against? I mean, who else is there?
It's a purchase from the manufacturer, from a distributor, I guess that would be the issue.
Yeah, I mean, if it's over $25,000, if it's not a sole source, and it's not
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's a manufacturer, then that would be a sole source.
If we want a certain mower, a certain model, I mean, that, to me, is, could be a sole source situation, I don't, I don't know.
Well, the demo guy can answer that. Do you have distributors, or don't you? Simple as that.
I'm sure Jim can get it to us for $24,900.
Well, we've got a bargaining chip now, we can pay you $24,99 cash.
I, I think you're, to answer your question, Tanya, we'd like to, probably, it sounds to me like we'd like to get it as soon as we can, and just work it out and get it.
I was saying, if they're the only ones to sell it, that's pretty, it's pretty simple to do sole source.
And then, if, if they sell it through distributors, we would just get competitive bids from the distributors?
Right.
Are there any other questions for Ramon? I know a couple of the things, when we look as the changes from budget discussion one to two, was, you know, we eliminated.
Jim, can I interrupt your?
Correct, oh, yes, definitely.
Can I make a, a, I, I'm stuck, I've got to take my son to the airport.
I know, I know.
And, you know, I shouldn't let him make the arrangements, but I know I'm going to be asked about the RV done at the end, can we?
Can we do that now? We can do that now.
Because I have a couple things I want to tell everybody about this, this situation. When, when I received this, which you all received, I looked at it, and then I got up off the floor and realized that something's wrong here, you know, and so I asked Mike, and he's working on it, so I, we, we still have a budget for prices he can feed, to be considered, so I, I just need more time. Now, we've stepped, one step ahead here with getting this from David to help us figure out this at the end, you know, the O-March, but I've, I've looked at this, and I've looked at this, and I've looked at this, and there is no way, no way that we put it in that park, and I wouldn't even recommend it at a price like this. I wouldn't even recommend it. When I started on this, I hadn't figured it out, but I didn't know that the engineers helped me out and came through, which is that way, you got to do this, and this is required, and stuff like that. And Mike's going to work with you on that, to, to try to see what we can, to work with the county on, and those types of things, so I'd rather turn that back over to you and let you take a look at it and see, because I can't recommend this, I just can't do it. I mean, I got another recommendation working on with the dog park, because I had so many people wanting it, and I got that about finished, and, but that's why I want to say to, to you all, more members of the community, that, and I can't do this.
Okay.
Okay? So, it's all right with you all, excuse myself, and I'll listen to the video.
Have fun.
Okay.
So, you're basically, you're saying you might take it out of the budget process?
Yeah, it's fresh bread.
Well, yeah, but what I want to do, Curtis, just, they're going to work on it to see what we can get it to, but anything, 200 would weigh out of line, in my opinion.
Well, you know.
Probably 100 would weigh out of line.
If you look at it, the, the 200 doesn't include asphalt.
I know, but that's what, that's what they're going to work with, where you shell, what, what we can do to get that to a base price, like the other people around here do.
Let me, let me give you a little history here, the tennis courts.
I understand that.
Dick Miller said, I want to spend $200,000, and we spent $600,000, because we were managing to a number and not what the hell we were.
Yeah, I understand that, I understand that, and that in itself brought up some other problems that we won't discuss.
Okay.
But I, I understand that, but I just know that when I started this, and people were asking me about it, and I started working on it, which has been now six months, it got, it got way out of hand, it got way out of hand.
And again, again, it's the location, you know, the location that we have, which is to the west of the middle school, it's wooded, it's sandy.
Well, we, we.
But, but there's enough land there to do some work, but.
We figured some of that in there with Mike doing it, with this guy, or something like that, but it's still the point where to meet certain county guys, I think we're in trouble.
Yeah, and we are, and it's just, it's just too bad, because none of us thought it'd be, I thought 60 or 70,000 would be high, and then they come up with 300,000?
Yeah.
And that's why I always say, we got Son of Lake, buddy.
And plus the zoning.
We're going to have that.
We can revisit that? Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll come back to this, we would have a bunch of money there.
Okay.
Thank you. If I'm thinking that you feel bad, we'd like to get an RV park. The old guy, you have it, but I got it, I'll listen to the video.
Thank you, Wally. Go ahead, Jim, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no problem.
So, just, actually, Ramon and Mike left, I told Ramon I'd give him a call if we had questions for him. To go back to the budget and kind of look at the changes, which we're already, I think, looking to amend the budget based on the rough mowers, so, right now, as, as opposed to looking at that four-year lease purchase of the two Ataro rough mowers, 4500s, we were going to change that from, from a purchase to a lease purchase to save, to save some dollars, but now that we're looking at the, the Tri-Macs, we'll amend that accordingly and then go forward. Also, another of the, the changes was to change the purchase of the golf carts to a three-year lease purchase, and that's actually at a savings. I incorrectly had put that, there is some wavering, so it's not a guarantee. I have the proposal from Easy Go and Club Car, and they, they don't guarantee it, we're obviously going to send it out to RFP, so the, the lease right now from Easy Go, a lease purchase, it's $78,200, and that's without, per year, without any monies for the GPS moving. The GPS is actually, it's $1,500 to move the units, plus expenses, which would be the person staying here and, and their per DM, and then we're looking into, because they believe we're going to have to get new brackets based on the carts changing, so we're looking at the prices in the bracket, so that's the reason, it's, it's $83,000, it could be 80 or 83, it just, we don't know until the RFP goes out.
Do you know what the interest rate is on that? Basically, all you're doing is getting a loan from them?
Yeah, it's 4.9%.
Okay.
And it is, and we did have them do an annual payment to save a little bit of money, so we pay it all upfront each year and don't compound the interest on itself. Then, the, the next thing we looked at was the Sand Pro, and that's, we're definitely planning on buying that with trade-in of, of things that we have in the yard, along with some money from the operating budget, but we don't think that's going to be of any amount. The aerifier, we, we eliminated the aerifier because it was a, basically, a five-to-six-year payback on the unit, to try to address some of our capital concerns that we had for this year. We did have, well, we actually had a lightning strike to our TV and sound system, should have the date actually with me, but about 10 days ago, knocked out the phones, knocked out quite a bit of things, so we did have Tom Green from Green Room back to look at that, and the new estimate is $17,100. And then we also had Bassett out, because Green Room has given us really great service, but they're out of Sarasota, so it, the wait time is longer than we would like, so we've, we've tried to look at a local provider that we, that we think could upgrade our system, we're not sure if Bassett can do that. Some of the system that we have now, like the security cameras, Green Room actually wrote the code, you know, for those cameras, so we'd almost be maintaining two systems if we went with Bassett for the audiovisual, and then would have to keep Green Room for the, for the security. But Bassett's quote was very similar, it was less than $1,000 difference for the, for the two quotes, so we're still looking at that. I still don't have my certification, to be honest, to explain the differences in the HDMI switch, other than they both said that it was, to move forward with the new technology with TVs, we have to replace our HDMI switch.
What do you mean by the code for security cameras? What do you mean by that?
Like, he wrote the software himself for the cameras, so.
So, we already had the cameras?
Yeah, well, it's a functioning, I mean, the software system is separate of the, you know, of the other systems. We have everything in place from, from Green Room, but if we went with Bassett, we would either have to try to get the code from Green Room, and I don't know if that's proprietary, I know they've asked him before, where he wasn't willing, you know, to let, let him into the code, or Bassett could replace that, that entire system, which really, the, the wait for Green Room, to me, the wait that we have for Green Room is more acceptable than making a change, but people can have different, you know, opinions for that. It appears to me that Green Room is a little more on the technology and a little, little bit ahead, so that's, at my point, they're my choice. If Bassett would have came in with a different price, then it would have been a different, different story, but their pricing is similar.
So, did you get a price on my 10-foot, my 10-foot TV?
Haven't gotten that price yet, no.
Is there any insurance coverage on any of that lightning strike? I think we were going to look into that.
Yes, yes, we have filed, we have filed a claim, actually, Tanya could explain that better, but we've called in the claim, and then we're getting the supporting document from Tom Green, so I expect that the, that our insurance company's going to pay a portion of, of the repairs. It would be nice if, I don't know if they'll even pay part of the upgrade, since where we're at is obsolete, but that is ongoing, looking into that.
We have $1,000 deductible.
The, the pergola. The pergola, we're continuing to look into that, and specifically, looking into the location out here in the yard to make sure that it, it fits with everything we do, not only the weddings, but also our other events. Right now, we're looking down here at the left corner. Traditionally, the brides come out this door, and then, as they come down the steps, they make what you would say kind of a little bit of a southeast path. And so for the photographer, the backdrop is basically the, the other pergola and just the nice wooded area. So that's where we would intend to put that. And what we'd like to do, and we just need to see, I'm sure Drew will be able to help us with this, we'd like to be able to take the area that's actually beyond where we mow now and kind of build up that area. So, because we want to use it as a dual purpose of also, you know, getting a fire pit or do something out there for the members to use, or for all of our guests to use when it's available, so we can fully utilize that area. So right now, Mike's in the process of working with, it's an Amish website that we're looking at primarily for a few of their ideas, but we're still shopping it.
We've decided to do that then, right? The pergola?
Well, I think that's what we're deciding now, but we, you know, we're presenting it, you know, as a good idea. We just need to get more information on the total cost of it and the viability, you know, of building up that area. I don't know what the restrictions would be of putting it there. So right now, the, I mean, my guess is the 15 to 20,000, you know, 15 to 20 is kind of where I'm thinking for a total price, but we'll be coming back with that. We did look into, or we're in the process of, we've got a scoreboard sign picked out that we're going, you know, going forward with, running it by different people to get their opinions of the sign, and we'll run it by the board. And then we're going to replace the deck and all the boards, paint the building, basically renovate that whole area. We did look at the clubhouse irrigation system, and that's not going to create, that's not going to require any funding from capital. We'll be fixing the system in-house and then sodding with our operating budget if we need to sod. But definitely, that's, that's one of our areas. It wasn't stated in our assumptions, but that's one of our internal areas that has to be radically upgraded for next year. The one thing that hasn't been in the budget, our capital budget, which is missing, and Mike's not here, is our bridges. So he's gone out and gotten some, some quotes to address the bridges, but he thinks, he wants to have some more time to look at what we can do in-house with those. So I'll be, I'll email you and give you more information on the bridges, because I, I want to address those and get those fixed properly for a period of time. So to go back through our, our budget, we've, we've addressed the rough mowers, we've addressed the airifier and the Sand Pro, we've looked at the golf cart lease purchase.
Can I ask you a question?
You bet.
Yes. The lease purchase is 83,000 per year, roughly, 83,000 per year, correct?
Yes.
Okay. In the capital plan, I only see it as one year. I just, I only bring that to your attention, because that's going to change a lot of the numbers in the future. For 18, 19, and 19 and 20, we'll be paying 83, correct? 83,000?
Great, yes. Thank you for catching that.
The only reason, like I said, that's just increased our, it'll increase the proposed budget, or the plan, by another 83,000.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
No, thank you. No, I'm glad you caught that.
Now, and that's a three-year lease, and there's a buyout option at the end?
Well, it really is.
I'd like you to change that lease to just a three-year purchase.
Just a purchase.
Because it's not a lease.
Right.
We're going to own it after three years.
Is it like a dollar buyout?
Exactly.
Yeah, it's, oh, okay.
So I'll change that to a purchase contract.
Three-year purchase.
The irrigation's still up in the air.
Yes, that irrigation is still up in the air.
Do we want to keep the 150,000 in the capital budget, or do we want to wait until we, we have some time to look over the assessment?
Got to leave it in right now.
Leave it in? Okay.
We've only got another three months to take out.
So that, those are, do we have any capital questions before we would get into rates or operating?
Mark, do you have any?
I'm just going to put my flak jacket on.
Jim, I have just, I'd like you to, I'd like you to give me a price, not now, or an estimate of what we do in weddings last year?
60,000, I can tell you that right now.
I think that's what he said, yeah.
You don't need to.
Okay. Hey, on the other thing on your capital plan, I'd, I'd caught the 83,000 as well, but you've got, for irrigation, you've got 150,000 this year, and then you're waiting three years before you do another 150. I would think if you're going to do irrigation upgrades, you're doing back-to-back.
I agree. And one of the things that I don't know if they brought out in their presentation, but for the, for the higher numbers of the irrigation, not the, not what I would call just the fix staying with hydraulic, but going to the two-wire and the electrical, you know, so where they were estimating that it would be total to do both courses, about 800,000, I think the interest they were quoting possibly was around 3.7. So that was a pretty good rate compared to some of the other rates that we had gotten. So because it's a municipal rate for financing the irrigation and labor, it was a lower interest rate than I thought it would be.
Okay.
Still figured 9,000 a month. Can you say that was 97,000?
He said that, but that don't sound right, no.
He said 9,9300 a month.
I might want to buy one of those.
Can we run the numbers, Omar? Can you run the amortization schedule on that, and we can take a look at that?
Well, it really doesn't matter now.
I mean, not now, but we can.
It was 9,300.
Yeah, because they were talking about for the bigger numbers of 10, 12, or 10- or 12-year period easily, or 15, if we wanted to try to push it out there, but they were looking more at 10 and 12. So questions on capital? Okay, so the, the rate sheets, we brought back three different rate sheets, which, as David Schumaker had explained, they're the, they're the maximum we can charge. That's, that's the reason we have these rate sheets.
Correct.
Is to establish as a municipality, the maximum we can charge.
Yeah, well, we're not in a municipality, but it does state under Section 990 of the Hines County ordinances is the one that requires it, and it says, "No such rates, fees, rentals, or other charges for any of the facilities or services of the district shall be fixed till after a public hearing, at which all users of the proposed facility or service owners, tenants, or occupants, blah, 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 have the opportunity to be heard." And so that's basically what it is, is we publish them, and then we have a public hearing to discuss them. That's required by county ordinance.
In talking with Jim, our goal was to have a public hearing at the July 21 meeting on these rates, because I believe in August is when you start sending out your, your membership information. Last year, we did adopt the rates very late. I think it was end of August, and that kind of rushed, rushed you through what you needed to do, so, I mean, if we.
Why do we do it now?
That's our goal, is to try to have a public hearing on July 21st. We have to advertise the public hearing.
Personally, I'd rather have us discuss it now and come up with a rate and then let the.
Yes, that was the idea, is to go ahead and discuss it now, yes.
Okay, good. I thought you wanted to wait another.
Oh, no, no, no.
So in the rates, one of the, one of the odd parts of the rates, if you go to the very bottom of the rate sheet, you know, we really haven't, at least since I have been here, or even to my knowledge before that, rented the building without food. And I, I unknowingly last year charged more than, than one of our rates to have them, to have Cisco come in and do a display show, just didn't really know that that rate applied. And so because of that, when you, when you look at the banquet facility for non-food, you see quite a large increase. And the only substantiation of that is just, with 365 days a year and no limit to when they could ask me to rent the building, I really don't want to have a ceiling there, you know, depending on the day, that would restrict what we could charge. I don't know if there's any comment on that.
So you're saying that the banquet rates at the bottom, we've increased it roughly, I don't know, 5,000, 4,500, 7,000, 6,500, which is the top end. Have we ever had somebody rent it?
No, we just haven't had that. We haven't had that, but I don't, I guess it just bothered me that the opportunity came up, and I did it unknowingly, but if, if I would have known the rate was there, we would have gotten $1,000 less than, you know, than, than what we did get. And so since it's just the maximum rate, and happens seldom, I wanted to set the rates high enough that we wouldn't, you know, that we wouldn't have to offer a lower rate than demand would, would require.
And the first page indicates just a 3% increase across the board for everybody and everything.
Correct.
I got two issues.
And that's what the budget was figured on. And we did, we did make a mistake, and we have to change the bottom where the sales tax states 7%. It should be seven and a half.
Seven and a half percent. How about the corporate membership? How are we going to resolve that, if we are?
No, we def, I mean, yeah, we need to resolve it, and actually, maybe, I, I don't know if I would have had the authority to do it, but, I mean, my recommendation is to not have a corporate membership.
I mean, I received your email on it, and I'm sure everybody else did too, so, you know, you explained it.
I disagree. I think you need a corporate membership, if nothing else. Maybe never sell it, but it's a good marketing tool to the community when you publish all these rates. If you show you have a corporate program here, that you might get a hospital, or you might get a car dealer, you might get somebody that's local here that would be interested in it. Now, the $3,000 I don't agree with, but, and I, and I hear about the Pike Lake thing, which, I don't know what happened back then, and I really don't care, but they should not fall under this corporate thing. If you want to cut a special deal for Pike Lake, that's fine, I don't care, but, but the corporate membership, in my mind, should be more like $9,000 for four, four members or something like that. So it's similar to this, or less than the single membership rate. And we sell them, fine. If we don't, fine, but it's, it's a nice marketing tool in terms of telling people that it's available.
No, I think that's a good idea, and I'll, I'll correspond before the next meeting and put something together. I'll correspond with all the supervisors by email.
Well, maybe unstated comments now.
I think we can talk about the Pike Lake deal, can't we, right now? Of course.
It needs to go.
We need to get rid of it. They need to be notified, and we don't have to do a thing to help our, you know, we can thank them.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't know what the parameters of it was. That's my concern, is I don't know what was promised, you know, if nothing else, what was grandfathered to these people.
Yeah, well, it was promised by somebody, Kurt, that didn't have the power to do it.
Well, I don't know that. That's my whole point, is, and I don't know how we find out.
Maybe I'm a little bit in the dark. What is the part, what is, what is it we're talking about?
Pike Lake here has a list of members that play here under this corporate $3,000, and there's like 15 people.
There's like 26 of them, if you count them.
Is it all that many?
Yes, it is.
So that's the whole issue here.
But it's all based on what?
We don't know. We don't know.
Yes, it's very easily canceled. There's nothing in writing.
That's right. It started in 2011, we're assuming. I mean, I, I want to talk to some of the board supervisors that were on here. I mean, and I, I got a feeling they had nothing to do with it, or didn't even know about it. And I don't know how it was done without the supervisor's permission.
No, the very, the simple answer is about knowing more than what I've just seen, is that if there's nothing in writing, there's, you know, there's no contract that extends this amount of time, you know, by, by some sort of verbal agreement. So I don't know what the easiest solution is, if it's to, if it's to say, well, they have whatever amount they paid, where you can roll that towards an individual or family or some other sort of membership, whatever it is you want to, you want to do, as opposed to just saying, you know, you're, you're not members anymore.
Yeah, they're over in October, like everybody else, and they're open to join, like everybody else.
Okay, that's probably maybe the simplest solution.
Yeah, that's the, I mean, I want them here, a lot of them are my friends, but.
Well, there's nothing to actually end, then. That's my point, is there's nothing actually to end, it's just, you know, that's, that's not an option that's going to be forwarded in any future.
But I kind of feel like that special prosecutor, I want to find out. Where in the heck came from?
I think they have to be notified, even though there's nothing to end. I believe that out of courtesy, we need to notify these people. They, they've been paying traditionally $3,000 a year, and, you know, for them to come in and find out, you know, that, they need to be notified. Yeah, they have to be notified.
I will give them a call, and that's, that's a good suggestion. And part of the reason, you know, the packet that you have from them, that I got that, was to kind of get them on the idea that it was being reviewed, so they would have an understanding that, that it could be not offered next year.
So you're going to come back with a corporate rate recommendation?
Yes, yes, I'm going to start out with the, kind of the template and look through the, you know, $9,000 for four people. Heartland did, and we'll work with that. Heartland Bank did, you know, talked to us about a corporate rate, but then they, you know, lost interest in it.
Yeah, I think that's a.
But it's good to have that option out there.
Just bring it to us, all right?
The other issue I got with your rate sheet is, you say the initiation fee is waived, but you don't state what the rate is. And again, another marketing negotiating tool, there should be a rate specified on that sheet.
We'll add that.
Whether we use it or not, it's a whole different ballgame, but still should be there.
That's a good idea.
And I think in the past, it was $3,000. Because unfortunately.
$3,000, yes.
It was. Because unfortunately, I'm financially aware of it.
Larry, you got something?
Now, we get, we do have sheets with, with the membership at three, four, and five, too.
Pick one.
Yeah, pick one. I truthfully like the 5% raise, because we haven't had a raise for ever in a day, and I, I know that there's lots of people going to scream over raising the membership 5%. But we have, I think it's been six or seven years since we've had it. All we have to do is look, look at the expenses going out, and, you know, where are we at? Things don't stay the same, guys.
Just to justify a 5%, which, far as I'm concerned, ought to be higher than that, but anyway. A membership at Spring Lake costs you $5,390, and nothing goes with it as far as the driving range, or pool, or. At Highlands Ridge, the membership rate is 5,467, and nothing goes with it. In fact, you pay $560 extra for the driving range. So raising rates 5% or 10% or whatever is, we're still $1,000 under the competition.
I think there's some people that would agree 100% with what Kurt just said, but I also think there's a lot of people that would totally disagree. You know, 10% would be just way over the top. If you wanted to do 3% or 4% every year for the, you know, that's fine, but to do an increase initially of, you know, greater than 3% is, you know, I just think it's wrong. You know, Larry said, and I agree, you look at the condition, the course is beautiful. These people are getting a great benefit. The product's excellent. But at the same token, you know, we're saying we'll go 3%, 4%, 5% on these proposals, but that's only on the memberships. It's not saying 3% on memberships, or 4% on memberships, and then 4% across the board. We're carrying the burden once again on the membership, okay? So, I mean, I would be more inclined if they said, "Oh, okay, we'll, we'll..." So, I mean, I, I would be more inclined if they said, oh, okay, we'll, we'll approve it for 4% or 5% even, fine, do it across the board.
What he's doing.
And I think that would be a disaster. No, it actually isn't.
No, it's 3%.
It's only, it's only, at the 5% rate, for an example, it's only on memberships.
That's right.
It's not on any of the other rates.
Kurt, all the way to the top.
No, I disagree. Right there, it goes up.
It says 3% increase on public, 5% on membership. That's.
That's Page 6, yeah.
Oh, I see.
So, I mean, I would, like I said, I'd be inclined to go to 5%. I don't have a problem with that.
That's a misprint because the dollar amounts are different.
Well, the, the membership dollar amounts have changed, but the membership's changed, but not the, what they're saying, I believe, is that the public rates aren't matching the increases in the membership rates.
The off the street rate is 48 for an example, right across the board.
I'm 100% agree with you. It should be the same across the board.
Now, basically what has been happening though is we have been raising the public rates the last five years that you're referencing and we haven't been raising the, the membership rates. So, you know, last year.
Another 2% and $40 is a dollar. I mean.
Oh, it's fine.
It's not going to make or break it.
More is better.
I think they all go up 5%.
If you go up, that's all I'm saying, just do it across the board.
5%, 5% I think would be a good, good way to do that, straight across.
So you would.
Or round it, you know, you got to round it off.
Sure.
I agree, 10% is too much, but it makes 5% feel better.
Absolutely.
We're going to get a lot of stink on this next week, uh, in a month, you know that.
Just for the, if you guys are done, I, I have a couple things. I don't, Jim, please explain to me again why we have a banquet facility, no food, from 3 to 5,000. Why, why do we have, why do we charge somebody 3 and somebody 5?
No, no, that's not what he's saying.
No, it's changing, so the maximum's changing. So what had happened before was like for the first one, it let, the maximum last year for a banquet facility with no food, I inadvertently charged $1,000 more than I was allowed to charge.
Okay.
And so the, those red numbers are to raise those numbers so that I don't get in a situation where we could get more for it, but what we published would limit us.
The numbers on the left are current and then the numbers on the right are what we're recommending.
The red is new.
So we're have one price?
Correct, just one price.
And my other, my other thing is, I, I play golf on in the afternoons and I've asked everybody I've played with, I've talked, played with two of them yesterday, new ones. And I ask them, they want 3, 4, 5, and I know when you ask a member what you're going to get. And of course, it was 3% and they said, Mike, if you do, if you do 4 or 5, you're going to have a problem. I mean, you're going to have a lot of kickback, so, you know, and that's just coming from the members, but I, me personally, so you guys know, I'm, I'll vote no unless it's 3%. But that doesn't, that doesn't mean anything.
But that's my, my problem is every, nobody wants to pay more, but give me a good reason not to pay more.
It raises a family membership by $200. And that, we haven't raised it for how many years? It goes back six years, I know.
You could, you guys, there's five of us, you know, you can, you can make anything you get three votes for.
But in my opinion, not being responsible by, by just barely doing a minimum here.
Then I'm not responsible.
Well, I didn't mean it personally.
One of the things I wanted to point out to you guys when I was going over this Section 990 of the Highlands County Ordinance is that one of those subsections, or subsection F states, it says the rates, fees, rentals or other charges prescribed shall be such as will produce revenues, together with any other assessments, taxes, revenues or funds available or pledged for such purpose, at least sufficient to provide for the items here and after listed, but not necessarily in the order stated. And the number one thing is to provide for all expenses of operation. And so technically, you know, what that's basically saying is that we are supposed to charge a rate that is going to pay for the expenses of the golf course. That is what we are, that is what the law says, the county ordinance says we are required to do. So now the, where we get around some of that is that the other funds available are pledged for such purpose, which is the, which is the money that we have set aside to, from the general fund to supplement the golf fund. So once we take, when we take those numbers into account, those are the rates, that's the racism that we need to be charging. So what, in my recommendation, the way that the least, the methodology you need to be using is how much is, do you want to supplement the golf fund from the general fund? And then you say, okay, now we need to figure out what we need to charge so that we're breaking even.
Well, then you know that.
That would, that will work fine if we charge the rates that we're publishing, because that's what you're going to base your revenue on. If you charge a discounted rate, then we are going to subsidize more out of the general fund because we're not bringing in that additional revenue. So I mean, it, it all goes with whether or not we're going to charge the rate that we put down on the sheet. Okay, that's all. So I mean, there's always going to be a floating number at the end.
Yeah, the public rates are maximums. You know, if someone walks in off the street and says, I'm going to pay you X number of dollars and they're putting off that sheet, you have to give it to them. It's just that simple.
Jim, would you bring us a figure in the next meeting for the, showing the offset of that, that 5% across the board? How many more dollars we bring in?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
You know, what, what Dave just mentioned about the, the code kind of leads into a thought that I had is that, you know, we, we kind of run this budget based on what we want and not really on dollars available. So I, I was thinking that maybe, maybe not this year, but for next year's budget, we start thinking about putting a limit on what the golf course or the golf fund will receive from the district. So the point is, is that instead of them coming in and asking for a million dollars worth of stuff, we'll say, you have a cap here of $300,000, for example, for operations and you got a cap of $300,000 for capital. Now you manage to that. Now, to me, that sets the bar that they have to be more responsible in terms of how they're running this place and they also have to be more responsible taking care of the equipment and managing the golf course. And I think it would put some, some feet to the fire, if you will, in terms of just asking for the moon all the time and, and we scramble up here trying to give it to them. And if Jim knew he only had $300,000 coming from across the street, you know, the candy land over there, I call it, but he might look at how he manages this place, that it's not quite, you know, maybe I can't hire that extra person or maybe I can't do something and just.
Yeah, but most of that stuff's supposed to come from us, isn't it? I mean, what?
Well, it is.
You know, he manages it after we tell him what he's going to manage.
Well, that's my, my whole point is right now, we're telling him he's got a million dollars.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying, we can't do a million dollars every year because we're running out of money.
Well, I, you know, I, my friend, I totally disagree with you.
Well, that's fine, that's okay.
Because I've seen too many of the golf courses that eventually had to be sold to private people and what's happened to the community. I, I think this has survived because we have taken care of the golf courses.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying don't take care of it. I'm just saying is there's a different mindset set when you start to manage to a budget versus a budget managing you.
And I agree.
That's all I'm saying.
We subsidize every year. So the thing is.
Exactly, yeah. Do you believe it? Look at the photo.
We're subsidizing every year and people think that it's part of, because it's part of our assessment, that it's, it should be automatically transferred over and, you know, to the golf because if they come up short, okay, whether it's 300,000 or 400,000 or whatever. I tend to agree with what Kurt just said. If you have a, manage to that particular budget without saying, I'm going to get at the end of the year, if, if I have a shortfall, you know, they know, they're going to go to the general fund and get it.
Yeah, but see, I, and I, I agree with what you said, but the golf courses are part of Sunland Lake. That is an entity of Sunland Lake. We take care of these golf courses. It's no different than a mile of paved road out there to me.
But if he has.
But we can generate some money here.
But if he's asking $4 million, example, $4 million budget this year to run this total operation to be at a break even point, then that's.
We're never going to break even. We have to subsidize this place.
Well.
I mean, that's.
Well, I'm not saying.
Sunland Lake is.
I don't say you don't subsidize it. I'm just saying is.
Have them work.
Look at, look at, turn it around and work it the other way is really all I'm saying.
Okay.
I mean, you don't manage your household that way. I mean, if you run short, you go buy a new car, you don't, you don't go across the street and ask handy for another 30,000 because it's not there.
Well, if I could, I would.
Well, I know. And that's my, and that's my whole point, is they can.
Okay.
All right. So what are we going to do?
On the rates, we're going to bring back a sheet with 5% membership, 5%.
Yes.
Correct.
Public.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll do, I mean, obviously the three's there, I'll do four and four and five and five. And roughly with green fee revenue, since we're right at a million dollars, you know, every, every percent is about 10 grand.
Okay.
So the resolution and public hearing for July 21st is okay with the supervisors? And so you are going to bring back one, two, three different rate sheets?
Yeah, we'll bring back.
For approval?
3%, 4% and 5% across the board.
Would that affect anything with Larry being gone?
Yeah, he won't vote.
His vote won't, his vote won't be part of the five.
So you got one cancellation of your three right now?
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know. To me, that's can, every, I don't know, I, I don't like the idea of having three rates. Let's pick one and go with it. Because everybody's going to gravitate to the three, who, who wouldn't? I mean.
That's interesting.
But it's not in the best interest of the district or the golf course.
Or the club.
Or the, everybody to have a 3% increase. It's just, it's not financially responsible.
But Jim, doesn't Jim have to look at it if he's going to increase everything by 5%? Maybe he has to relook at those numbers and say, you know, am I pricing myself out of the market for some of these other off the street rates and things of that nature? You know, he's, he's, you have to kind of, Jim has to kind of look at this and say, now the dynamics have changed a little bit. I wasn't going to increase any of the outside play, which I can appreciate, but I, I am going to increase the membership rate by five, up to 5%. And so what's going to happen is people, like I said at the very beginning, why would I like to see a 5% increase on a membership and not across the board for everything else?
Well, I think.
And so if that's what you're saying, let's increase it all 5% across the board, then you have to ask him over there who's running this operation, what is it going to do? How is it going to affect his play, his groups and things of that nature if he increases it even, even though you're right, it's only a buck or so.
Well, I think that's it. You got to start there and then work backwards.
And he has to do that.
Exactly.
That's fine, but next, if he comes to the next meeting with only a 5%, would he decide somewhere in between now and then that I don't think I want to go up on the outside rates?
My, my point is, is that he comes back with a 5% and in the meantime, he can discuss, he said, look, and I looked at 5%, it's not going to work for public play and maybe it has to be 3 and 1/2 or maybe it needs to be 4 because we've been raising it over the years.
I thought you were saying bring it as a proposal to the next meeting.
No, not, well, it's just another work, another workshop.
Okay, fine. I, I apologize.
No, and I, I think your point is the diminishing fallout. So if you, if you raise something 5% and you lose 4% of your members or, or if you raise it 5% public and you lose 4% of the public, you don't end up making more money. You just end up raising your rate.
Mark, don't you think though that these other golf courses, you know, three of them are owned by the same, same outfit? A lot of those courses, I think, look at Sunland Lake and when we publish our rates, that's when they publish their rates. I mean, we are kind of setting the example of, of where we want to be and, and I truly think the amount of money, we're not making any money and I'm sure they can't be making any money either. Don't you, I think that all of them will come up if we publish a rate that goes up like 5%.
Spring Lake could be the only one that has to publish their rates, right?
Most likely.
Yeah.
To answer your question, Larry, no, they probably will change the rates. I'm just saying, he's the guy that's got to run the operation too. We've asked him to do it and he doesn't want to price himself out of a market.
I understand that.
That's all I'm thinking of.
And in an ideal world, I, you know, I don't think that weather adjusted this year and we raised outside rates, at least right now, we're averaging 6% and it's going to drop with the summer. You know, so we're probably going to end the year at a 4% increase and, and I would relate it to our conditioning. You know, that's basically where we got the 4%. My only concern is I would like to see our play go up more before we start pushing the rates. It would be much better in the fact that we're getting too crowded and we want to, you know, uncrowd it by charging more as opposed to just, logic's going to tell us if we push the outside rates, you're going to get less outsiders. How many less is the real question?
I, I totally disagree with that.
I, I was going to say, I don't have a problem, at least me, as an individual. I could care less if the rounds go down, long as the revenue dollars stay at the same, because it's less wear and tear on the course, number one, so therefore it would be less maintenance required. I mean, you're going to look at it a lot in different ways. I mean.
The other, the other issue in my mind is that if we keep our rates low, then everybody else is going to keep their rates low. And especially Spring Lake and Highlands Ridge, they got to be competitive. So the point is, they cannot condition their course the way we can. So they're going to lose play. People are going to come here and play, yeah, we're going to lose some people. Fine. Because in the busy season, we're booked solid anyway, so it wouldn't hurt to lose a few people. As long as the revenues to March Point stays up there, the fewer the better. That's why private country clubs only have 100 members and they pay $50,000 a year because that's what they need to maintain their course. They don't care if they got 100 or 50 members or whatever, as long as the revenue is there, that's the important part.
So, so really what we're saying is that we could be, like when we raise the rate, the membership rate from 3 to 5%, we could end up with the same amount of revenue at the end of the year, we're just going to have less members. Or when we, when we raise the public rate, we could end up with the same revenue.
That's what we're paying you for. You have to decide that. How many members will I lose by going up 5% and how much public play am I going to lose by going up 5%? And then you're the one that's got to question that judgment, not us. We're just saying we want more money.
And I'm kicking myself for letting us not raise the membership dues last year.
There you go, there you go.
Because I mean, it is proven that members are more receptive to consistent raises as opposed to not having raises and then spikes.
That's life.
That is life.
Votes can change, but I think it was 5 to 0 last year not to raise them. So I don't know what you could have done other than got on your knees and pleaded, but.
Well, I probably should have been on my knees then. But, no, well, I mean, let's be honest, we were on a shock effect of losing our oversea. You know, so we had an awful year and we didn't want to raise, we didn't want to raise the rates. That was, that was the reason. But no, we will come, I'll, I'll come back with the recommendations, but, but definitely I'll have, you know, multiple recommendations for us to discuss and look through. And then the financial impact that we expect those to have.
Jane, is there any, just interrupt you, is there a, we could do this June 30th before Larry leaves? At that, at that meeting?
No, I can't, I can't, I can't get a published.
I'm just trying to get, I hate it when one of us are gone.
When is the next meeting?
July, July 21st, but there's a night meeting on the 16th, what's it, 13th?
You're going to be gone for that?
Yeah, Larry'd be gone.
So what happens if we move that one forward? When, when are you leaving?
You can go to Alaska anytime. It's open all year round.
How about the 12th? Can we reschedule for the 12th?
We haven't advertised yet.
Well, yeah, we've got plenty of time. You got time. Let's change the meeting date so he can be here. Let's change the meeting date so he can be here.
I just, I would, I would like all of us here.
I would like to be here.
You know, that's...
Tuesday, or it doesn't have to be a Thursday.
Even on a Friday evening would be up, uh...
Week before?
13th.
But Tuesday, Tuesday would be the 11th. Tuesday, July 11th?
On a weeknight. I can't, I can't do that Friday. I know that right now.
Okay. A Tuesday night, that's just the heck out of me, because I'd love to be here.
July 11th.
Do you wanna make, are you talking about moving, moving the public meeting? Well, I would almost, well, yeah, I'm trying to decide whether or not we want to move the existing one, or if we would rather schedule a special meeting just for the rate issue. I mean, that's, you know, that's an option.
I just, in my mind, I want Larry here because the 5 aren't his vote.
Understood, understood, yeah. I understand that, and, but you want, we want him here because we want him to vote on this specific issue.
On this specific issue.
And so we could call a special meeting in order to achieve that, as opposed to moving a public meeting that's been posted for...
The meeting we're talking about is the Thursday night meeting.
Yeah, there's already a, it's a scheduled meeting, but we haven't published it yet.
Oh, we haven't published it?
We have not, have not published it.
So just take the Thursday meeting, move it to Tuesday?
Okay, yeah, if we haven't published it, yeah, that's fine. That's fine, we just changed it.
That's what we'll do.
Okay. So it'll be a 7 o'clock meeting at the community center?
Yep.
Okay?
Let's have a motion and a vote real quick to do that, although it sounds...
All right, I need to make a motion. We move the July 13th, Thursday night, meeting to July 11th, at the same time, same place. Can you?
The newsletter published, I don't know if that makes a difference, but the newsletter does have the July 13th date in it.
Okay. But we didn't, we didn't do a formal advertisement in the paper yet, so we can, we can do an e-blast to change that.
Second time.
All right, we got a motion in a second.
Hey, Chrissy.
Supervisor White?
Yes.
Supervisor Edgell? Supervisor Cam?
Yes.
Supervisor McCullough?
Yes.
President Gilphy?
Yes.
We'd lose our girl. I want you here. We've moved you to the 11th, correct?
We just moved whatever it was, whatever the previously, whatever that Thursday meeting was, it's now on the 11th.
So the golf rates are gonna be discussed at the July 11th meeting, and then on July 21st, the formal adoption will take place?
Yes.
Is that good? Okay.
Well, can we, Jane, can we do that? What if it's a 3-2 vote, and Larry's the third one, and we're here at 2 each on July 21st? But can we?
We're not adopting.
The motion fails at a 2-2.
Right. So it'd be no then.
So why would we have an adoption that early? I mean, why do we have to do it that early?
Jim is recommending that we adopt the rates early, because if not, it would be the end of August before we adopt the rates, and I believe he'd want to get out his membership information early August. Is that the goal of the club?
Yes, we have a September 1st sign up, so we would like to get it out before September 4.
When the first meeting in August? Oh, there isn't one.
It's the last Friday in August, I believe, the 25th, 23rd? Somewhere in that range.
See, and I just don't want that to happen.
Right.
Well, I would...
Well, I mean, because arguably, what we're talking about is, we're going to, at the meeting we just rescheduled, we're going to put together a rate schedule to publish, to publish it. So I would think at that point, you know, the, afterwards, because that's when the public meeting to discuss it is going to be. Now, if we, I mean, there's, that's the whole point of the public discussion, they're gonna get out, people are gonna come up and they're gonna whine and complain about a 5% increase, or whatever it is that we proposed. And if there's a, if you want to, you can change it at that time. I understand what you're saying is, Larry won't be there at that meeting, it'll only be 4 of you, but the actual publication will have already occurred, because that's, to me, the part of the issue is...
So we can approve it on the 11th?
Yes.
You're going to approve what to publish on the 11th? And then once that gets published, there will be, the 21st is the public meeting where that's discussed pursuant to the statute.
And then Jim could, Jim could possibly get all that work done if we know what the majority wants, and then have the vote when Larry gets back. Right? We can do that?
No.
No, because, yeah, once, because then you have to publish the final race. Once the rates have become, have been adopted, then you publish them as adopted.
But he could still do his work in August, once we agreed to...
See, that's what I'm saying. See, I'm not gonna be here for the 21st or the 13th.
And I'm just saying, if they vote 5%, 3 or 4 of them...
That's going to happen on the 11th.
Not 5, not 5.
That'll happen on the 11th.
But then we go to, can we just say that's what we decided, and then wait till Larry gets back to have the resolution? That's all right. And Jim could go ahead, because it's gonna be that way.
So I guess the question is, how would I, if I was going to publish to the membership after the July 11th, would I say our expected membership rate?
Yes, that's what, that's what we're going to do, is we're gonna publish, because the statute, the ordinance requires that we cannot fix the rates until a public hearing, which all the users of the proposed services have had a chance to talk. And so we're gonna have to publish, you know, kind of, we're gonna say, here's what we're proposing to, that the, the rates are going to be.
Okay.
So, and that, we're gonna pick that on the 11th. That's gonna get voted on and say, okay, now go publish that, so that the people can come to the 21st meeting and be heard at the public hearing, where we will fix them as permanent. Now, if there's a big outpouring on the 21st, and you guys say, well, you know what, I can't believe we've had this much of a discussion, and you can make some, you can amend that. You know, amend it and adopt them, fix them, amend them and fix them at that 21st meeting, then they will be published and say, these are the fixed rates, you know, that have been adopted by the board, after the public hearing.
Okay. I think we're okay.
I think we have it.
Okay, July 11th will be, will be a discussion for the budget and a discussion of the golf rates. Okay? Once, once there is a consensus on the rates, that's when we're gonna publish the rates, advertise a public hearing for July 21st with a resolution to adopt the golf rates.
Correct.
And we'll either be adopting them as, as presented or as amended, as you guys may decide after the public outpouring.
Very good.
Moving right along.
Yeah.
So through the rates now, there weren't, we didn't, I guess the only change that we actually had to the operating budget was in the GNA, miscellaneous GNA was decreased from $8,700, $6,000, down to $2,700.
You gotta find, what page are you on?
Page 10.
Can we just back up for a second?
Sure. Just a quick question on 7. You see a decrease in our membership, I understand people might join in what... I'm just curious, did you just use a standard factor, X amount of percent, to reduce it down to 560,000?
Correct. Yes, in, in our first budget meeting, we went through and we projected that membership was projected, it was decreasing 6% this year, which is 16, 17, and we were projecting a 5% decrease next year.
Okay. Now, did that factor in increases of any type in the membership fees?
No, then we, after the 5% decrease, then we factored in a 3% increase of membership fees.
So you did factor in a 3%?
Yes.
Okay, so if we, if we adopted a 5%, it's even gonna boost that number up higher?
Correct. As long as, as long as we don't, well, so the number that you say higher, so, so in other words, if we have a 5% increase, then the project, the projection of the decrease would go up.
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd have 6% loss or 7% loss or something.
Which would apply to the trail fees as well. Those are member fees.
Yeah, and it would also apply to the public rates. I mean, so you're gonna expect when you increase rates that you'll lose numbers, but hopefully not lose overall dollar.
No.
Okay, page 10, you said?
Yes, so page 10 is a, with general and administrative expenses, there was a, I had a $6,000 decrease there.
Okay. Back up, back up.
Yes.
Back to 9.
You're a page at a time, you know.
Sure.
Go back to 9.
Page at a time, so...
Okay. So I asked a question at the meeting on the 9th, and I've been educated that, I guess I can't yet, we're trying to put a budget together, and one of the things that everybody looks at is labor costs. And I asked at that particular meeting, if there was a way we could break it out, similar to what the district does by essentially organizational departments. And that would give us, you know, a good feeling as to where the labor dollars are going, okay? And I received the email back, I guess you had some conversations with Ron and some conversations with Tanya, and said, we can't do that because we're, it has to do with privacy of the employees, and it could create a problem. And I get it. I understand that. So you came back with a list of part-time, full-time employees, which still doesn't give me an idea. You had, and I don't, I have to grab it, like, a number of starters you had in there, okay? And I didn't even know we had starters, except for, we was a while on Sunday, I've seen them. So those starters that you have on there, do they work, like, 1 day a week, or do we, do they work multiple days a week? Do they receive benefit? If they work 1 day a week, do they receive a benefit of being an employee, so that they get the same golf benefits?
So to improve on that would be to give you more labor hours and how their benefits change if it's like a 10-hour-a-week, part-time person?
Yeah.
As opposed to a larger...
Okay. So here's where I'm struggling, and I'm sure none of these guys are struggling with it, but I believe, and you have to correct me, are you going to be changing, are you hiring more people, are you not going to hire more people? I mean, and what's driving this question is, I believe John might be moving over to another function. Yes, no?
John Votter, Mark's talking about the mechanic, so I, I don't think we've, well, I don't think that we know that we have a position that John would want to move to. So in other words, I don't know that the position that the district is gonna advertise is a better position than, than what John currently has.
Okay, so that brings up a very interesting question. And I'm, all I'm trying to understand is if, in Mike's budget, and I can pull it up, I think in Mike's budget, Mike Hurley, he included that position, if you're going to advertise for it, but it was my understanding that potentially, you could bring, John could potentially go over, because that's...
We're looking for a lead mechanic.
Yeah, and he would be, my understanding was, once again, a good candidate and a fit for it. And if that dollar amount is going over to the district as an employee, they're gonna cover it under their budget, doesn't that reduce your budget by X dollars?
Well, he needs another mechanic, don't he? He'd replace John if he moved, wouldn't he?
Well, that's the question, I guess, are you gonna replace him?
Right now, my budget was, was, was put together with, without having any help from anyone.
No, no. Here's what he's trying to get at.
No, no, I understand what he's saying, but I don't have anything concrete to work off to, to decrease my budget.
If John leaves that position and goes works for the district, are you gonna replace John with another mechanic?
It matters what he's able to do after...
No.
Well, yes, yes, they, yes, we are going to have to have another mechanic.
Okay, so you need the dollars in the budget to hire the new guy.
Correct.
Okay. I think that's what Mark's after.
That's basically what I was asking, you did it much more eloquently, as always. But that also now is gonna possibly hurt something at the district level, because my discussions were, because essentially, his responsibilities were basically transferring over to the district. He was going to do all of the maintenance, preventative maintenance, software records and all of that stuff. And he was gonna continue to maintain the equipment, most of the equipment that's out of here, for, for the golf course. But it was just being paid by the district. Now, Tanya, help me with this, is that not the case?
Well, we don't know that he, he's gonna be able to do 100% of maintaining the golf equipment, especially if he's taking over added responsibilities of the district equipment. And so we haven't had the time to, you know, analyze that.
Okay.
He does have assistant mechanics that do help John, so we need to work through that internally. But the idea is to, you know, have John maintain the equipment that he's doing now, but we don't know that he can do 100% of that job, in addition to all the district equipment.
And that makes sense. I mean, here again, I'm just trying to look at it, if that's, hasn't worked out, and I'm not privy to all of those details in the background, but that goes right back to when I talk about labor. I have no idea where, where this, I just see a total number. I don't know how it really breaks out, whereas at the district level, I can see that. In the case of Tanil, she has some changes in her organization, okay? John is now gone. I don't know if she's going to hire him, but she's still got the same budget for labor, okay? So somewhere along the line, we need to kind of get this labor stopped down.
I think the difference between the district and Billy Casper, Billy Casper's not an employee, he is a contractor. So he's basically coming in and quoting, "I'm gonna spend $135,000 on labor for whatever." If you agree with that number, that's all you need to know. You don't need to know how much each guy's getting paid.
I'm not asking for each guy. What I'm trying to do is understand by department a little bit, because...
Well, he hasn't broken down by department. He's got golf, he's got food, he's got grounds. It's all by department. So...
This thing fell apart.
I already broke mine down.
That's fine. You know, you're right.
You don't go to a car dealer and say, well, I'm gonna buy this car, but I want to know how much you're paying the general manager.
I'm not asking, I don't want to know, I'm saying, I don't want to know what they're made. I don't care less, that's not, that's not my intention. We're giving, as a, as a board, as a district, we hire Casper to run our golf operations as they see fit, okay? They ask us for a budget of X dollars. We, as a board, say, okay, you're asking for this money from the district, we're either gonna approve it or no, we're not gonna approve it. What we can't determine is, in labor costs, how many people really are working there, and maybe there is some extra overhead that we can look at and say, maybe they can reduce it in this area. That's their decision.
To me, that's his job, not ours, but that's my difference of opinion, I guess. It's up to him to manage that labor amount. If we say we're gonna pay him $600,000 for golf course labor, it's up to him to manage within that. Now, if you don't want to pay him $600,000, tell him you're gonna pay him $500,000 and let him deal with it.
Okay.
That's, it's not, I don't think it's up to us to do that.
No, just, I still go back to, if you lose a position, the labor, if you lose a position, somebody resigns, and you don't fill that position, shouldn't the labor be reduced?
But he's projecting, this is a projection, this isn't actual, so he's projecting that he's not gonna lose anybody, or, you know, and because he's got the same number across the board, so he's basically saying he's not, now, if he loses somebody throughout the year, then his actual cost would go down and then be below budget then, but...
Maybe we can cut it and we can find out where it's going.
Well, there you go.
Well, it is, I mean, the question with the mechanic is a viable question, because we, we're going into a new situation with the new building, you know, and a new process of, of taking care of our own district equipment, which I think a lot of times in the past was sent out. So there's a big question as to whether that mechanic who comes in, what he's gonna be able to do beyond the records. So is he just gonna be doing the records, or can he actually start doing work on the machines that in the past we've, we've sent out? And then it's also, John, from what I understand, from Ramon, or David Bell, or anybody that's met him, is a very gifted mechanic, so, you know, the fact that our, the fact that our spray rig is running is a mystery to everyone, because it should've been in the junk pile a long time ago. So he might actually be more valuable to us on the golf course than, than to the district based on what they need him for. If, if in fact, they just need someone to keep the records and actually send the equipment[1738.16] out, it's my estimation that they can, you know, find one more efficiently than John. If, if they find out that we're able to maintain our equipment in-house and save a lot of money by not sending it out, then I think John might be that person.
I don't see John doing paperwork. I see John getting his fingernails dirty and, you know, if you're going to...
If that's the case, we can realign duties to have someone else do that.
Well, that's my point, you hire a computer person.
I mean, that's, that's what we really need to look at because this position we created in the general fund is a $70,000 position, taken to wages, benefits, all of that, so...
Well, you went right to where I was going. It's a $70,000. The guy is extremely gifted. He is, the things he does over there, I don't know how he does it. And, you know, if you've got to replace him with somebody else, I'm saying, wow, you're not going to get much better than this guy. I mean, he just, he just...
No, no, he's, he's excellent and, you know, we've worked to keep him, you know, he's had, had opportunities and he's, not only is he good as a mechanic, but he's good as a trainer, you know, so he's, we're utilizing him more, training people because he sees the equipment go in and out. In the, the opportunity with the new building, we should have much better equipment. You know, we, we need as a, as a company to leverage that building and to keep the outside of the equipment even looking better now that it's not exposed to the elements to instill more pride and to have people take even better care of the equipment. But I think the answer to your question is that it's going to be, at least at this point, it's going to be a learning year to kind of walk our way through it and try to utilize our people the best and, and take advantage of, of the opportunity we have with John because I, yeah, I don't think we want him inputting data.
No, not at all. So back to my other question, so if I'm, and I'm not picking on a starter, but, you know, that's the easy one. If I'm a starter, can I get the benefit of, you know, the, the golf benefits that all Casper employees get?
Yes, we can detail it. Andy, with my supervision, has a lot of autonomy to adjust what people can do and if we hire somebody and he's working two days a week and he wants to play golf three days a week, he just tells him, "You're not playing golf three days a week."
I was just going to say, you know, I, I could use a part-time job where I'd be a starter, I'll be a starter on Saturdays and Sundays if I can get free golf.
Oh, I agree. I had a, I had a former member who, when I got here, you know, the, the member had dropped his, his membership and when he was playing here as a, for, for, you know, paying, he came to me and said he was looking for a job and I walked into Andy and said, "We're never hiring him." No, I mean, you, I will never hire a customer. That's just my own personal policy or a member because you, you know, once a member, always a member is the way I look at it. It, it's hard for people to...
Most of the people out there are, are members that we've hired.
I said, "I."
Oh, you, in the past two years.
Yeah, I have a different, I have a different, you know, impression of how it works because it, to me, it creates difficulties within your, you know, your organization of whether someone's a member or an employee when they come to a...
Well, first of all, I thought all the fringe benefits as being an employee were eliminated. I didn't think there were any anymore. I mean, a couple of people like Neil Hodge and Pete Pribble, when he was still alive, got grandfathered because that was something they were promised, but all new and hires weren't given that same opportunity. Now, is, am I wrong?
No, I believe the fringe, I think the fringe, the specific fringe benefit for our, a lot of our part-time employees is that they're allowed to play complimentary golf at certain times of the day and certain times of the year. So they're not allowed to play, like in season, they're not allowed to play between eight and three without paying a fee. If they want to play between eight and three, they pay half rate for that. So if the, you know, if the resident rate's $42, they would pay $21 to play between eight and three. If they play before, you know, if they play in the slow times...
Right, okay, I thought the old, the old fringe benefit was that your, your golf membership was free or it was discounted, whatever, so you're not doing any of that anymore, right?
Well, there's the, there's the grandfathered people.
Well, I forget those people.
And then you have people like Ed Scrivner who wants to play in groups and wants to play between eight and three and he's an employee, but he takes out a, he takes out a membership so he can play whenever...
But it's not discounted?
No, his is not discounted.
Okay, that's how I made it.
And I think maybe some of the confusion is there, there's Casper employees that get certain fringe benefits, okay? And then there were the previous people that you were talking about that were grandfathered, that was a whole different scenario, but all Casper employees get some form of fringe benefit as it pertains to golf, correct?
Correct, and it's regulated how much, by how much they work. So there are some employees, and I hate using names, but, you know, like Kay Mayer who works full-time and is a big ambassador of ours, we pretty much let her play whenever she wants. It's not very much because she's working all the time. But that's, that's an exception that Andy makes that I, you know, that I approve.
But not her husband, right?
But not her husband.
And we just trust Andy to, like, and other, other people, that Andy's doing what he's told, right?
Yes, and we talk, I mean, we discuss, I mean, we've gone through it, you know, as far as even from employee to employee and what, and what he does.
But I think in the future, don't you think it'd be better to wean out a few of the, we have, if we have employees now that are working and, and getting that, that are members or potential members that...
I don't know, David could tell me more. I don't know that I can reduce someone's hours because they've been a, you know, because of a relationship that they had. I can do it for performance, but I probably...
Eddie Scrivener is the best example and it's, Ed wants them, and he follows the rules. You know, like, right now, I, I think he's, he's off his membership because he buys a five-month contract. Yesterday, when he played with us, he went and got, he couldn't drive his own cart and, and he goes by the rules, he come home and got a cart, you know, and, but we don't have many of them. Most of the time, we have people taking advantage of, of these kinds of deals.
No, and, and we'll continue to watch it, you know, I've, I'm, I'm very in tune to it, to the, you know.
Okay, okay.
But now we're on page...
Ten?
Page 10. Any questions on, actually, just what's the next page that anybody would, we don't have changes, so what would be the next page someone has a question on?
The only thing I highlighted on page 11 was, oh, never mind, not that one, forget that. On page 12, I highlighted, only because a resident brought it up, was the employee meals, and I, I figured he'd be here today, but obviously he's not, but he, just so, just for the record, so he understands, he was under the impression that employee meals, they get a 25% discount and the number was at the time, I think, $11,000. So he was under the impression that $44,000 of meals are purchased by residents. And Jim, you explained it to me, is that that's not really true. It's what it is, is every time you have a meeting with your employees and it's like a dinner or luncheon type meeting, that you pick up the whole tab for that. So it's not really 25% of a large number, it's 25% of what they buy plus 100% of some other stuff, so.
No, and I would, if it wouldn't be too much trouble, I would like to actually go through without increasing my budget and, and pick out some things because one of the things that we do try to work on is staff enrichment and those things. And it would be nice to have a small line item to be able to track it better in each, in each department, but, yes, we do about, I'd say about five or six times a year have the maintenance crew in, you know, do a safety video and talk about things that are pertinent. And, you know, this Tuesday, we're going to have an F and B meeting to try to, my goal, I think Casper does a great job of the ACE culture, which is making the place fun for the members and for the guests. What I want to try to do is set a mission for a server for when someone comes in, what's the expectation of what we want them to get out of it. So, so they can, they can have a better ownership of working with the chefs and everybody in here to basically upgrade what we're doing.
What is a mystery shop?
A mystery shop, yeah, a mystery shop, and this is one of the ways that, this is one of the ways with those line items. So about six or seven times a year, we have someone come out here to play golf that is hired by Billy Casper, paid for by the district, but hired by Billy Casper, and they actually, you know, have a checklist of how Kay, you know, Kay got a $15 gift card last time because she aced her, her part of the mystery shop. Because he came up and, you know, how, how her shirt looked, whether she had her name tag on, how she addressed him, whether he perceived that they were having a good time.
We do that too.
That's pretty cool.
Whether, whether she upsold them, and then that happens in the restaurant, also happens on the beverage card, and also any golf course employees that are seen are evaluated as to how they do that, and, and it's a big deal. You know, we stress it a lot to try to create continuity with the staff. And then we actually instituted about six months ago that anybody in their department that aces it, that gets 100%, gets a gift card.
Oh, nice.
And we post those, you know, after they're done, they're sent out to each department head. If someone fails something, they have to remedially on the internet, you know, go through that segment of the ACE culture to refresh them, you know, to the fact that they needed to do X wire.
In fact, I want to thank all three of y'all for taking care of that and establishing that program. That is a program, I think that is a real benefit. And I don't know if Billy Casper had that in place before we started, but implementing that program has been a great thing. We have, it's really changed how we look at customer service.
Excellent.
I should have told you we did that instead of you having to ask, but I'm glad you picked up on that. Any questions on 13?
No.
Or 14? And then just overall, any overall questions?
I got, I got a couple, just Scrub J. Waste Area is what I call him on Turtle Run, I don't know what else to call him. Who's responsible for keeping that clean? Is it the district or Billy Casper?
District.
District. Do you have enough money in your budget to do it next year? Because it's getting bad again. We have, we spent tons of...
We should be spraying the vines and keeping the vines down. That's number one. We, we have enough maintenance budget for that, yes we do. We should be keeping up on those vines because I know the vines do tend to take over a lot of places on the course. The mulching and the other labor costs that we did last year, I mean, we do have maintenance for Turtle Run, yes we do.
So here's my question, is the areas that have been cleared, you have enough money in your budget to keep them cleared?
That is my understanding, yes it is.
Then you need to go for a ride out on Turtle Run.
Are we not, are we not doing that?
You are not doing it.
Okay, we are not doing that, okay.
And, and the only reason I'm bringing it up with, is to find out who's responsible. Secondly, if you're not going to do it, which to me would be going backwards, is that you need to have the area stake, red, red stakes in because you cannot play a ball out of that area. You can't, it's just impossible because all the vines that are growing in there, again, it's, another year, it'll be completely right back to where it was. Well, we spent all this money to clean it up in the first place.
We did spend the money and we, we wanted to continue to maintain the areas that we already cleared and that was what I, you know, indicated to Jim early on that our, Mike Hurley and his roads crews and his maintenance crews are going to be responsible for the Turtle Run course, keeping the vines under control and looking at the underbrush. We might be looking at that once a year, you know, if we have to bring in a machine, but otherwise, a vine should be kept up with.
How does the communication work? Is it, does Ramon tell you that he, he needs to get it cleaned or who's responsible?
No, no, we should be, we should be completely responsible for it. I don't, I don't know that you've talked about with any of our crews.
No, I don't see him out on the golf course, and I don't, I don't talk with Georgia Mr., you know, clear that down.
Oh, reason. Okay, well, we...
But you know what I'm talking about, right? Okay.
Okay, well, we failed then to, to maintain and look at that.
I just want to make sure next year going in, we, we got the funds to do it.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
And we'll get out and look, I mean, we'll help be a voice to Mike.
That'd be great.
And we do have the Turtle Run closure coming up, which will be an ideal time, you know, for 10 days where the course is closed for, for the district to really hit it. And then we have another closure in September.
Okay.
Because it is, it...
Everywhere, 13 on the, not 13, on the right side as well.
The stuff that's sprayed in there isn't labeled for any protective wear, but people still like it better if they can spray it when it's closed.
Yeah, that stuff, it's that climbing stuff.
And it's, it's actually, the pods are opening up now, so it's going everywhere.
It's seeding now.
Yeah, it's seeding.
So we got another five years of it.
I got another idea. I don't know if it's worth talking or not, especially the concern about group play right here, but, you know, we're, we're concerned about us burning up our golf carts, you know, in terms of three years, they don't last anymore in three years. And, and we have like Tanglewood, which plays here once a week, twice a week, kind of the, is it twice, twice a week? The thought was is to let them use their golf carts on the golf course versus them using ours. They drive them over here, they park them, they jump in our cart and go out and, and use them. And I wondered if we could charge them a trail fee somehow that would allow them to use their own golf carts on, on the golf course. You know, like 100 bucks or 200, I don't know what the number is, I mean, you have a clue what it would be? That would be beneficial to them to be able to use their own golf cart and be willing to pay us a little more and would also lock them into coming here more often. Maybe we'd even get three rounds a week out of them instead of two, I don't know, I'm just throwing an idea out, it's really... Well, that went nowhere.
Well, we can look at it, well, my mind's just trying to figure out how to actually apply it and we, we actually, when somebody's not using their cart, you know, if someone's a seasonal membership and their membership expires, the privilege of them using their cart on the course is tied to the membership, so after that, they can't use their cart.
Well, maybe that would be offered to them as well. They use their own cart and pay a trail fee, whatever the number would be. I don't know.
Yeah, so, I mean, it could be a money generator, so we could look into it.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of, you might pick up a few thousand bucks, I don't know. Plus he saves the wear and tear on our own carts.
No, we can look into that and, yeah, I would like, I mean, the, the three years is, is difficult. That's a, that's a fast turnaround. And I think, I don't know if I've told you all individually, but I'm hoping that either the, the lithium battery is, this is the first year it's out, that's a five-year battery without any limitations on, on numbers of rounds. And then you almost get the same life out of a gas cart. So I'm kind of hoping this, this purchase of carts is our last experience in, in that because the gas carts are getting quieter, I don't think they're quiet enough yet. But the lithium battery, it's just, I just think it's too much of a leap and I think they're charging a premium for the, for the battery. When you cost it out, it's not any cheaper, or at least they can't prove to me that it's cheaper. So, I mean, he proves that it's less expensive because he, he charges me for people to fill the batteries, you know, and tells me what I'll save, but I'm going to have the person out there parking the carts anyway. So if it doesn't change my labor hours, to me, it's not a savings.
Those carts, are they 48 or 36?
The lithiums?
No, the ones we got now.
The ones we have now are 48. Volt, you mean?
Well, I was wondering how many batteries, so you got eight, eight, eight batteries, eight, six volts?
I think it, I think it's six eight volt batteries.
Oh, they're six batteries.
Six batteries, eight volts.
Six batteries.
Six batteries.
Six eight.
The reason I, the reason I asked, because I went online looking at batteries, I don't know crap about batteries, but there's, for $130, you can buy a battery that has a five-year warranty, free replacement. So if you figure you got eight batteries in a cart, that's $1,000 a cart. Now, if the running gear on the cart was to the point where it was good for another two or three years, it would make sense to replace all of our batteries with these five-year batteries, which it only costs us like a couple hundred thousand.
No, I'll get that website, I'll get that website and talk to the manufacturers about that.
Well, to follow up on what Kurt just said too, I, you know, you went out and you did the option for the least to reduce the, the initial investment that we had to make. So it came down to the 83,000. Did we look at batteries as well? I mean, did we come up with a price for them?
Yes.
We did actually come up.
We did, I did, I did send out a comparison, I'm not sure if it was in the budget book or not.
Then I, I'm sorry, I must have missed it.
It was in a previous, it was in your first book, I think.
Oh, in the first book, okay. So we just abandoned that idea then?
Well, yeah, the difficulty is, I believe it's about a $15,000 savings per year and it's not so bad in year four, but year five and six, the carts are much... And the, it's not so bad in year four, but year five and six, the carts are much, much more prone to breaking down and do look a lot worse when, when you're comparing it. So, and it surprises me that it's not a bigger savings.
Yeah, I think I questioned you on how much it was for, I was surprised how much the new batteries were.
Yeah, you said replace batteries was $90,000.
Yeah.
And then $10,000 for each year after the three years. But your trade-in value goes from 2,000 to 1,300, so
You'll lose 700.
You're losing 70,000 of that, so you really didn't gain anything.
You didn't gain a thing. And you got an old cart.
Yeah. They've got it figured out pretty good. We lose.
How, how often do we turn those carts in the, in the high season? Twice, did you say twice a day?
Yeah, the, the 36 holes is the challenge, because a cart that's just going, going 18 holes would last longer. So it's, it's the problem that your whole fleet, like in January, our whole fleet is going to get to a point where we can't send them the second nine, second 18. If we only had to send them once, you know, they would probably go for another two or three more months.
So
But you can't, you know, you can't bring them in and bump them or anything with the charge. They got to go right back out. And so once, they're warranted to go 36 holes. So once those warranties start to go, they start, you know, failing on the course. And I honestly don't understand it, but one battery makes the whole cart go bad.
Correct.
So that's the problem, is you just, you kind of lose the experience when you're continually, like if you try to, to go past the life of the battery, you end up trailering in a whole bunch of carts, and it creates a lot of slow play problems and, and just experience problems with that.
So in the high season, and specifically in the high season, the busy, busy season, we have 100 carts and we're turning them twice. So 200 carts are going, roughly, if you look at it, it's 200 carts.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that I need to double check. It might be maybe only 60 of them are turned twice, or, or 70 of them, but you definitely get deep into the, we actually have to block during season sometimes to catch up, you know, because what happens is specifically like on a Sunday, our, our members tend to play less on a Sunday. So there's higher black card demand. So we actually, you know, have to watch. If, if there aren't any members playing, we can get in a situation where we have tee times, but the carts aren't back for the tee times. So, you know, there's certain times that Andy could tell you where the demand for the black cards is much greater, and then other days where it's, where it's less. But we're definitely deep, you know, on Sundays during season, we're deep into, you know, 60, 70 carts, hopefully, you know, more. But, yeah, and we, you know, basically right at three years, and Kurt asked me, the, the amp hours is actually, it's a, it's a pedal down. So, and that relates the distance. And what's interesting is the amp hours actually become less efficient. So when you first get your golf cart, brand-new carts come off the truck, it's about 20 to 25 hours for the first 18. If they go another 18, then that's like 30 to 35 hours. So as the battery gets weaker, it's more pedal, you know, you drain it more when you put it pedal down. So like the second year of the battery is your first 18, and it's like 30 amp hours now, instead of 20 to 25. So they, and that's probably, at least that explains to me why they all kind of hit the wall at the same time, because it starts, you know, draining them deeper as you go. So hopefully lithium or gas would be, you know, a good, I don't like the stigma of gas, the cart doesn't bother me. I was impressed when I drove the Yamaha gas cart. And their residual value is much better. Because of, you know, one of the things now, they're thinking the lithium residual is going to be better, because if you turn it in after three or four years, they can sell it in a second market to somebody without that person having to immediately replace the batteries. But just something about me doesn't make me trust what a vendor tells me about value.
Yeah, well, what prompted my question was a comment that was made at one of the previous meetings. It said, the reason our, you know, I think it might even come, you know, I'm not sure, that the reason our, the member carts last so much longer is because they, you know, people, first of all, members take care of their carts better than, you know, the outside public is going to take. We don't have as many rounds on them, we're not turning them twice a day. So when you said they were turning them twice a day, and I said, well, if you're turning them twice a day, that's roughly 200 carts, if you think in terms of that, times two players, sometimes two players on each cart, that's 400 rounds. And I'm kind of calculating these numbers, I'm saying, that's 400 rounds in five days, you know, all of a sudden, we got 20,000 rounds, about 400 rounds, I'm sorry, 2,000 rounds in a given week. And I said, well, how many weeks does it going to take us to get to that 35,000 number that you were talking about? Because you said there's roughly 70,000 total rounds played between members and get. So then, of course, I backed the revenue numbers into that.
Yeah. And then it's very interesting when you, when you try to figure out the differences of, you know, how the amp hours go up in the second 18 in case the cart, so that's one of the reasons the member cart would go much further. And it's also a big help, obviously, when a member has somebody ride in their cart, as opposed to that person having to ride in a black cart.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
When you get to page 30, I just have a, okay, perfect one. I mentioned about the 2018, 19, you know, future or proposed capital that just needs to be updated there, the 83,000 per year?
Yes, we'll, we'll update that.
As well as, it's just a typo, but it says 90 rental carts and it's 100, correct?
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
Are we, are we finished with golf?
Yes. Any questions? Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Want to continue through?
I, I don't know, I was looking at Mike to, our, our Mr. President to
I don't think we got that much more, do we? I think we got to be
I don't think it'll take that long to build
I don't think it's going to take We, we have to be out of here by 2:30, don't we, or something? They got, Jim?
Kokomo.
Do you have something coming in here at 2:30 or whatever?
I know they're getting
A rum test.
Okay. We, we can be fast.
Okay.
I mean, five minutes fast, I mean, a bulk of the
We're fine.
I think we can make it.
Yeah, I think we should be able to skim through pretty quick on the general fund. The majority of changes on each page you'll see is, we've gone ahead and adjusted all the life insurance savings, as well as all the golf changes that happened for their capital equipment. We did increase on page 34, which is the revenues. We went ahead and adjusted that back up. Just to hold Billy Casper accountable for the GPS advertising revenue. Page 35, we removed the general manager's merit increase.
Got a problem here.
No, we don't, not there.
On 35?
Page 35.
35. You show a merit, merit increase of $1,000 and you subtracted 1,500.
Correct. So there's two employees in that, in that, in that category. So the general managers, we calculated a 3% merit increase, which is the 1,500, that was included last time. There was 2,500 total. We removed 1,500 and left the board secretary's merit increase of $1,000. So if you multiply the 33, 500 times 3%
Well, I understand that, but you're showing 1,000 and you deducted 1,500.
It was 2,500 before.
Oh.
So we dropped it to 1,000.
Okay.
Okay? So it was 83.5, if you see the proposed first number, and then we dropped it to 82,000.
All right.
Okay?
I got another comment there. You know, everybody's getting a pay increase except for Tanya, because she's under contract.
Contract, correct.
And, you know, she's done a lot of work for us in saving us money, thinking outside the box. Last year, she got us a grant for the sidewalk in Ponce de Leon. This year, she's thinking outside the box, she's getting us over $100,000 savings in our insurance costs and our premiums. I think she, that 47.5 should be bumped to 50.
Are we for sure given merit raises? I mean, I didn't know we discussed that.
It's in the budget.
What 47.5?
I know, but it's, that's $45,000, Kurt.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just saying, I'm proposing that we change that number. You can always dispute it or whatever.
The rest of her salary is someplace that way.
The other half is definitely in the utility funds. It'd be another 50.
You just, you just brought up what I had yelled at Mike about, that I wanted to talk about at the end of the meeting. I know you hired Tanya, and she didn't have the experience at that time, and you hired her, I think, like $30,000 under what Michael Wright was withdrawing, is that correct?
Yes.
We did give her a $5,000 raise last year. Since that time, she has upgraded her education, and she now is a certified, how's that read?
Certified district manager.
Certified district manager. My proposal that I wanted to run by you guys, is she saved us over $100,000 in insurance alone this year. I would like to bump her rate, her salary by $10,000 this year, and I want it in this year's budget.
Wow there.
It is a, it is a pretty big increase, but we, like I said, she was hired way below what the district managers make. Way below. Way below what we're paying. And then we, we didn't have a district manager.
Yeah, I, I think we can put it in there, but we can, I mean, when I was on the city council, the main job for us was to, we always worried about salaries. Since I've been on the board, we, we've given $95,000 in merit raises without, or 85,000, without any of the benefits going for it. And I know, we got great employees. I'm not saying we, Tanya's terrific. But the one thing we can control is the salaries, and it doesn't seem like, I mean, we fight over $10,000 for the Latino tour, and you want to give her $10,000 raise?
And she deserves it.
And I think she deserves it.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not saying that, but whether
Well, first of all, why do, why, why do you think the employees don't deserve a 3% raise?
Well, not every year, they can't, Kurt.
Listen.
They can't get one every year.
Why not?
Because we can't afford it. These are stuff that never goes away. You keep adding 3% and 3% and 3%.
That's okay. Their cost of living goes up. I'm, I'm on social security, I get a raise. Because cost of living, I hadn't get one last year, but
You did get one?
No, I didn't get anything.
And I'm not, I'm not against this, guys, but
You are.
You know, we have got, how about giving a 1%? I mean, my wife worked for the
And we're talking about two different things.
My wife worked for the county government, and she didn't get a raise for seven years.
Well, that's, that issue is there, and our issue is here.
I know, but we can afford it?
Yes, we can.
I thought we were arguing about, we're arguing about $10,000 every time I turn around.
Well, if you don't, if, you know, that's your opinion. My opinion is, if Larry wants to go 10, I don't have a problem with it. I think she deserves it. You know, a lot of managers get paid bonuses based on their performance. She gets nothing. You know, I mean
No, no offense, and I, and she does a tremendous job, and she's entitled to get an increase. Would a 10% raise?
Keep in mind
Or a 11% raise?
I just don't think we, we talk out both sides of our mouth here, and I
I'm not talking both sides of my mouth.
We, we're fighting like hell over something and then
You know, we'll go back to the Latino tour thing, okay? Let's talk about it.
Latino tour has nothing to do with this.
You know, it has nothing to do with it. We're talking about employee, employee performance.
We fight, all I'm saying is, we fight for every nickel and dime on this board.
Okay.
Okay? We can turn around
Okay, let's put it this way.
Say, we'll wipe all of that out. We'll wipe all of that out, Kurt, and it, what, what was said by the board in the past doesn't matter. Now, we've gotten people that come into our meetings here, and they're saying, what does it matter? This board keeps spending, 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 you know?
Well, you guys don't have any trouble spending money on the golf course.
And I, I have comments about that too. I, I have a lot of comments.
Here's my issue, is that you've got a good employee. She could go get another job right now and probably make more money than she's getting paid here, but she likes working here, she likes the community. And the point is, is if she does decide to leave, you aren't going to find another general district manager for less than 100 grand. So why take that risk and keep her here, keep her satisfied? I mean, Michael Wright was the worst district manager I ever saw. He, he was the typical government employee. He did nothing more than what he had to, and just sat there, and anytime there was a new idea to come up to save money or to, or do a little work to improve this district, he'd come up with 10 reasons why not to do it. You guys didn't experience him, so you don't know really what I'm talking about, but this guy was terrible, and he was making $30,000 more than he made it out.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the board's fault. And I agree
What is it the board's fault?
I, I come to, I come to
Listen, let me finish, let me finish.
I come to meetings and I saw Michael Wright was
But the point is, is that he was a certified district manager, and that's what you had to pay the guy to hire him.
I know.
So you guys are
I just
I mean, I'm not talking for Tanya, but you guys are opening up a can of worms here that I don't think you guys
Kurt, we're not, we're not saying Tanya isn't worth it, because I believe
Well, then you should, you should
But I sat here, week after week after week, and we fight over the dangest stuff.
All right, let's, let's look through here then, we'll find you 10 grand.
I appreciate the comments, but let me speak for the employees for just a minute. Not every employee does receive a 3%, but the budget allows for that if they're, if they're merit, it is a merit system. They do get evaluations. If, you know, this, this budget allows us to give up to a 3%. If there is a percentage difference that you're proposing, we could entertain that. It, you know, not every employee does get a 3%.
But I'm just saying, where is it written that we give a 3% every year?
It is written.
It's not written. It's not written. It's within the budget.
Then why was, as much as we're hurting, why was that put in? I thought we were trying to, I thought we're trying to save money.
We, we've implemented an evaluation system that we've done ever since I've been at the district, and based on the evaluation system, we
It may or may not be spent.
But you just see what I mean, Tanya. I mean, we're cutting, we try to cut, and we got to add stuff, we got to do this, we got to do that. And merit raises were never even brought up.
They're always there.
As a way to cut. I mean, or it was proposed by you, and I, you're, you're wanting to cut and save money. I mean, I, I'm surprised that you wanted to give $45,000 in merit raise. I mean, because we're, we're so tight on money.
With my budget deficit presentation today, you know, I said different things. We can cut expenses in the general fund, we can cut expenses in the golf fund, or we can raise revenues, as an option. I didn't give any specifics on which expenses.
Would you, you see where I'm coming from though?
Yes, so I can entertain anything. Anything you want to entertain on cutting expenses, we can do that. But I didn't, I didn't give any examples.
But I want you to do that. I don't, I don't want to have to do that. But I want you to do that, I don't, I don't want to have to do that, you're the one that's got to run this place.
I can absolutely, I can absolutely do that. Don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm just-
She's telling you what she wants, all right now.
We're, we have about a $500,000 deficit right now, just in the general fund, and, you know, I can, I can absolutely do that, but we're, we're kind of waiting to see with the golf, you know, the golf is a big part of that, so.
Well, we can take the approach is, we have a budget with no deficit. So we tell Jim, start cutting, we tell Tanya, start cutting, we have, what, 14 million coming in? We're not spending a dime more than 14 million. You guys find out where you're going to cut.
Yeah.
And you want people screaming, you'll hear some people screaming.
Well, Kurt, that's our job, I mean, I think that's our job, and it's-
That is necessarily our job.
Okay.
In my opinion. Our opinion is to look into the future and kind of-
And I think that's fine, if you guys want to propose a $10,000 raise for Tanya, I think that's fine.
It's going to be brought in and voted for.
Yeah.
Yeah, as a regular meeting, but I-
But I don't want her to take this personal, it's just, I mean, I just sat here, week after week, and we're, we got to cut this, we got to cut that, well, I guess it's where you, what we all want to cut, is what's important.
Right now, we got a great staff that not only does their job, they also are thinking outside the box. Omar's done a great job in finding properties, he's, he's stepped up the foreclosure rate.
I mean, over 100,000 in sales, right, and that's-
Well, that's, my whole point is, so he decides to leave, you bring in another guy, and you start all over again, and you've wasted that 3% just training the new person, even if they're willing to work at the same rate.
I don't know if a 3% raise is going to keep Omar here or not, but that's, I mean, but that's his personal business, but-
So, you think a 1% would?
He's going to stay here whether he wants to, or he doesn't get a better job offer.
No, I don't think so, I don't think so. A good employee doesn't think that way. I mean, you talk about a $5 an hour employee, absolutely, they're going to go every time they make an extra nickel. You're talking about professional people here that don't do those kind of things, unless they're abused, they, you know, their goals aren't met, they have a more of a reason than 3% to go find another job. There's other reasons why they do that.
Well, this isn't anything personal, but it's just ridiculous how we fight over stuff, and then I get, I hear, let's give Tanya $10,000, that kind of, holy-
I'd like to, I'd like to bring it as a-
Well, it's, it's going to be there.
Back to the board.
Yeah, well, I think you should, I mean-
And it needs to be voted on.
I can at least discuss it with it, can't I?
Yeah.
Man. Okay, sorry.
Well, it's fine, I mean, you got your opinion, I got mine.
Yeah.
I, I have thick skin, it's good, it's fine, don't ever, don't ever make a comment, you know, I'm, I want criticism just as well as-
It's not personal.
Oh, I know, I know that.
I do have a question, can we move on?
But I do want to look out for the employees as well, you know, and, and any recommendations-
As long as I guess you think we can afford it, I guess we can do it.
I do have a question about-
I just question why you do it.
All right, I thought you were done, sorry. On page 37, recreation specialist at $38,300, that's what Jonathan was making, I assume?
That's what Jonathan was making.
Okay, is she getting the same rate?
So, for, no, for this budget book, we were in that transition period where we didn't know what we were going to do, we didn't know if we were going to go outside and hire, or hire internally, we posted internally, and Kayla, Tanil offers a position to Kayla, so now there has been a reduction in that salary, so you will see-
Which is what, do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head, no.
Yeah, I don't know.
That might be your 10 grand right there.
But, yeah, it might be significant, yeah.
Well, we got it, let's give it away.
That's crazy.
So, that was page 37, page 38, I believe we discussed the majority of it, insurance, the travel and training and the dues, that we discussed at the first budget meeting, code enforcement.
39, there's a saving 17,000.
Significant savings.
That's half of what we're talking about.
The health insurance, again, contract labor, we put that in the security budget, just so if we can do the patrolling, that was discussed at the first budget meeting, buildings and grounds, $6,000 savings with the health insurance, and the general-
Building and grounds, I did notice that that $3,300 merit increase, see, I do look at these, Mike, but is that a 5% rate? Why would that be? When you add up, I assume you don't give merit raises to seasonal people?
Correct.
So if you add up that 72.5 total, I think around a 5% rate there, instead of, 3% to me would be about 2,100, something like that.
Yeah, it looks like it is, I'll go back to that spreadsheet and find out what, what's being included in that calculation.
I think, I think I asked about that, Kurt, and it was for two or three employees. I don't know if I asked you about it, or-
There's only three employees there.
Only three.
Of course, for all three of them, or, and there was somebody else thrown in?
Well, that's what they're married in, it is the total of the group.
So, I'll look into that on page 41. Page 42, obviously there's more employees in that department, so there's significant savings in the health insurance that we're expecting to acquire there. We adjusted the streetlights for an additional 20,000. Drainage maintenance, we increased it by 50-
We're on page 42. Oh, I went too fast, okay.
So we increased the drainage maintenance by 50,000, include the extra two units that was discussed at the first budget meeting. We reduced 20,000 in roads and sidewalks to give streets and the streetlights the 20,000, so all we did was adjust those two line items. And then the equipment, we reduced it by $116,000.
That brings, I just a question, but, you know, when you guys, you eliminated a front in loader or something, right? If I remember right? So why would you ask for something if you so easily give it back? I guess that's kind of the thought process that I'm not sure of. I would expect people to ask for equipment and services and whatever else you need, based on need, not some pipe dream, or the candy store approach, again, in my opinion.
It is based on need, but I asked Mike Curly to take a look at his equipment very closely, and if we could postpone it a year or two. I mean, based on cash flow, I, I asked him, you know, can, can this equipment wait? Can we, can we look at other options in the meantime? And the answer was yes, in this case.
That's good.
Page 43, we removed the merit increase for the mechanic's position. Right now, we have that budgeted at 41.6, that's just an estimate that we're throwing out, but we don't know what a lead mechanic's going to come in asking, or wanting, or demanding, but we feel like that's an adequate number, based on, we looked at the county, what, I think they were advertising recently for a mechanic, and somewhere in that range is what we feel is comfortable and acceptable. And then we, we adjusted the life insurance down, because we could better predict with being under the county's insurance umbrella now. Reserve contingency changes, a slight amount, golf operating, we were pooling some from reserves and some from operating, the operating section went up $132,000, so that means we're not funding that from reserves, and then the other half of that is 122, decreased 138,000, so you can see that difference there between the reserves and, and actual operating amount. And then the golf capital went down 263,850. You guys understand?
Uh huh.
You comfortable?
Yeah, just for the leasing and all the other projects.
Correct. And then we have, just to wrap it up, we have the RV storage at 200,000, we reduced that 100 grand, and we left the kitchen as is. Any questions on the capital?
With the RV storage, I think we're going to eliminate that from our budget in the, in the meantime.
I got the impression Wally wants to come back one more time out of revised number.
One more time, we're going to leave it, okay, leave it in there until we see what the revision is.
I know Polson's gone back, and they provided that 160, I don't know if we're going to get it much lower, but we'll try one more time.
Well, 160, they eliminated the asphalt.
Right, which, on, on that 160, they didn't include streetlights.
Plus they eliminated the lighting, they eliminated the cameras, I mean, why do something if you're going to, it's not complete? That's just, you're wasting our time and everybody's time by doing it.
I think Wally would agree, I, just by the way he talked, but, because it's just way too much money.
So do, we're going to come back one more time, and then you guys can decide to keep it, or remove it at the next budget meeting.
Do we want to redo that kitchen thing and cut that by 50% or something?
That's, that's up to the board.
I think by the next meeting, the July 11th meeting, we'll have some proposals for you, so then we can whack it then, and keep it, or whatever you want to do.
Are you having several different proposals for the kitchen, and several different for the lanai, or just one?
We're, yes, no, we're getting both. I'm working on the lanai right now, I'm, I'm talking to individual contractors to kind of get a cost estimate, to see if this $300,000 is even in the ballpark, or if he's right, and, you know, my 100,000 is way off. I, you know, I looked at it as a residential, you know, if it was my house, I would do this, this, and this, it might be a whole different for a commercial basis, so, but we are looking at it, I've had contractors come in, look, I haven't gotten any prices back yet, they're just giving me thumbs.
And you're getting a price for doing half of it?
Both.
Or, and both, go, good, okay.
Because the air conditioning guy told me that the system would work better if it was on two systems, which I said is great, because I want it one and two, and so he said that's fine, so, but I haven't got anything.
Well, just, we have options, all right?
Well, what we're doing is trying to justify the, the architect and the kitchen fishman guys' proposal that you got to do this, or don't do anything, and we're just saying, you know, do we really entrust this guy? And he's, he's got one opinion, so we're out looking for, I think Jim said he's got three other kitchen designers he's talking to, so, and I'm doing the lanai thing, so we'll, we'll hopefully get something.
Trying to bring back options.
Yeah, just did nothing else to justify, and if it comes back that, what's his name, Cliff, is right at 1.4 million, then we can make, kind of like the irrigation, we don't know enough about it to make a good decision, so, we're just trying to get to that point, and then decide whether, anyway, back to the capital fund. Originally, you had a forklift in there for the maintenance building, and you took it out. So, the way I read in here, the forklift was to be able to move stuff up into the-
Right, the overhead storage compartment.
Yeah, what's it called? I forgot, lost it.
The loft area, but it's-
Loft, there's another word for it.
Mezzanine.
Storage.
Mezzanine, that's the word, thank you much. So, how are you going to get stuff up there if you don't have a forklift?
Based on Mike, this initial year, that, that mezzanine was established to create, you know, documents and Christmas lights, it's not supposed to withhold substantial weight. So Mike thinks they widen that stairway, so everything that they're going to carry, boxes, storage, paper, they feel, they feel like they can accommodate that without needing a big forklift.
So the 25,000 you're saving, you're going to waste in labor, basically?
We don't feel like they're going to be storing that much.
Oh, okay.
We don't feel like Don or George are going to have that much paperwork out there, so.
I thought you had all kinds of storage, paperwork in all these golf cart bins, or whatever.
Forklift is designed for a pallet system, so, you know, it's-
I know, I know, but you got to get it up there.
We have a forklift.
We were planning on carrying it initially.
Oh, we do have one?
We have that, that gruel crawler that, what do they call it? The, the one on tracks? It's got a lift, and we got forks.
Oh, that thing, the mulcher grinder thing?
Yeah, that same unit.
I don't think it'd reach that high, though.
Maybe it would. I think it will.
Okay, don't matter, I just-
Yeah, I'm not sure, I know, I know Mike looked into it, he was going to propose a gate in order to get equipment in there, but he felt he could make do without it, so.
I'm just questioning it.
But you did put a utility vehicle in, too.
Which is another gator.
No, I'm just saying you did put another one in.
Yes, okay. Anything else on the general fund capital?
Nope.
Utility fund, there was really one major change, which is health insurance. Everything else basically stayed the same. There was no changes to any of the projects, or?
Well, obviously for the, what page are you in?
64. 63, starts the utility. So page 65 should show a decrease of 6,500, I'm not sure why this spreadsheet doesn't show it, but it's line item 536, 2,300.
No, didn't figure that out.
2,300, you said?
Yeah, 2,300, life and health insurance, we're, we're predicting a $6,500 savings in that, that department.
Page 66, you need to change the 47.5 to 55.
Any questions on the utility capital?
No, a whole bunch of stuff I don't understand.
I think the two, two biggest projects for that is going to be the wiring upgrades, which we are projecting at 250,000, and then the skater upgrades. Our long-term plan is go ahead and try and wrap up everything at unit 23, and then start moving to unit four in the future. We've already did the gen, the blowers this year, and some of the other projects, let's go ahead and get the upgrades and the skater in that, in that unit, and then move on.
Will that be complete, then? Most of it?
Yes.
I mean, start new, and, okay.
RV storage.
Anything else?
Move down there?
I think I did.
Anything else, anybody?
I just want to go back to-
Thank you, said Adam.
Just a comment. Yeah, just want to go back, earlier I didn't bring it up, it was under correspondence, or, one of the letters we received from the people at the president in a hill. Some of the information in there was accurate, some of it was very inaccurate. We all agree, I think, that they might have, might have been able to, the communications might have been a little better. I mean, I attend those meetings, so I've kind of heard what people had to say. My comment would be, it's, this has come up multiple times, not only from these people, that when we have a bid, and a lot of people from the audience have said, you know, and we get only one person that bids, we get, that's it, and we always award it to one person, and the questions come up, do we have a list of preferred vendors, or, or people that have bid in the past, and, and do we contact them? Now, when we send an RFP out, I, I think that goes out through Allison's group, right?
When we, when we advertise for an RFP, we use Highland's News Sun as the-
It's the finance department.
Oh, at the finance department, yes.
So, when that goes out, when we receive a, a response of one, do we actually ever call people? I mean, this has been brought up over and over and over, and I, I thought we said we didn't, but I might be incorrect on that.
We always have anticipation of what we're going to receive, we expect two, three, four, that when that date comes, we don't know what's going to arrive. Same thing happened, a good example is the Don Bell signs. We knew Don Bell signs had the, the signs we wanted, we had another vendor, local vendor who was interested, we couldn't find the third quote, so we said, let's put this out the bid, see if we can get some more interest. Neither one of them decided to bid that day. The reason why? They had all the information, they knew what was requested, they just decided not to do that. We've done our due diligence and advised them of, hey, this is the date you need to have it in by, now if they do their, their part in, in bid, we can't control up to that date.
Whether they bid or no bid.
Right, correct.
Okay, but prior to, prior to the deadline date, do we-
We have conversations-
-pick up the phone and call these people?
Yes, absolutely.
That's all I wanted to know.
In that case, we had five different ones, so before the bid comes in, we, we do our, do our work, I mean, we want more, I mean, it's better pricing for us, we want to have more, more bids.
That's fine. And it's happened on a couple occasions, even with the, I want to say the architects, no bids, I get on the phone after, and we get six interested.
Oh, yeah, that happened, yes.
I don't know if it's just the hassle of going through the RFP, or getting someone to do the paperwork administratively on their side, I'm not sure what, where the discrepancy is on, on both sides, but-
I got an answer for you.
We've definitely had some trouble with RFPs in relation to quotes.
Got an answer for you? Florida.
Florida?
Florida.
I can't believe how much business goes by the wayside to all these contractors, because they don't even return your phone call. It's just ridiculous.
Mark, Mark, I can tell you, in defense of Tanya, and Mike, and Omar, and I think probably even Tanil does it, but, the same people get up there and complain about it, and I know for a fact you guys call, and try, and, and we've explained to them, since I've been on the board, five times, that that's what they do. But it's like talk and to act.
You're not giving them the answer they want.
Well, but they do, they're crazy, we, we have no reason to bid, get one bidder. I mean, it's like Tanya's, I mean, but it's, you cannot convince, and I get so disgusted with them, and I try not to act like, but, I don't know what they want us to say, we're giving it to our uncle, you know, we want him to make extra money, I mean, so you guys do a good job that way, so. I have one thing with this, the last thing on this golf policy, Mark wanted to talk to you guys, when do you want to do this? Because it's something we should go through.
I think we should have a meeting on it.
Okay, I mean, that's what I meant, if we, you-
Well, is there a timeline on that? Is there something that needs to be done before we start the new memberships, or?
I don't know, I don't, in my mind, we don't, but just so it's done in the future, but he's done all this work, we need, we need to finish up.